Good evening, everybody. Thanks for waiting. We're getting a late start here. We'll just let our attendees pile up before we start the meeting.
I'll get your flag too ready.
Oh, it's ready, our cash. Got a new one tonight. Okay, we're up to sixty attendees. It looks like we are leveled off. So. If we could come to order. And. And please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God and is with us.
This for all. All right, thank you, everybody. And could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December eighth, twenty twenty, and this is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled starting time of five thirty P. M. In an effort to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices, the city of Jersey City canceled all public meetings until further notice. As a result, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that's open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Means Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on December first. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
Thank you, Erica. Uh, can we have a roll call, please, Mike?
I don't do that.
I'm sorry.
I got it. That was like what? Okay. Doctor Gonzalez.
Here.
Doctor Desai.
Yeah.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Commissioner DeCor.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Horton.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
I believe that's nine present.
Thank you. I think we missed, uh, did we miss Joyce?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Council President Waterman.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we have ten. Uh, okay, Mike, now, could you swear on the staff, please? Sorry about that.
No problem. I see Mallory, Tim, Matt, Cameron, Erica. All right, do you guys swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, obviously, if you have ten members, only nine can vote. So if and when, I don't know who the alternates are. Erica, I would.
Mr. Desai, Mr. Doctor Desai.
Okay.
Um, we are, is David still?
I'm here till like six o'clock and then I come back in.
Yeah, David, um. I don't think we're gonna get a vote on Twenty Carbon Place by six o'clock.
Okay.
So.
Do you want me to bow? That way I could do the other meeting?
Yeah, do you wanna jump out and we'll, uh, we'll pick you up when you're finished? Okay.
Yes. Are we voting first for the calendar, I think?
Uh, yeah, do you wanna vote on the calendar first?
Of course, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's, yes.
Okay, so, um. Erica, let's jump over correspondence and old business real quick. And we will get to item nine on the agenda first is the review and discussion of the twenty twenty-one planning board meeting calendar. So. Everyone's seen the calendar for next year, correct?
Yes.
Uh, I'll just read the dates off quick. Our meeting dates are January fifth, January nineteenth, February second, February sixteenth, March ninth, March twenty-third, April sixth, April twentieth, May fourth, May eighteenth, June eighth, June twenty-second, July sixth, July twentieth, August tenth, August twenty-fourth, September fourteenth, September twenty-eighth, October fifth, October nineteenth, November ninth, November twenty-third, December seventh, and December twenty-first. Uh, does anybody have any problems, questions, concerns about any of those?
No.
No.
Chairman, I actually just wanted to point out real quick.
Um. You have to swear you in.
Sure, sorry.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? Tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Oh, I actually just wanted to add that, uh, so we will know, uh, there's a new building that's being constructed. And it's across, it's across the way from us. I, give me one second. So, uh, it's for Journal, uh, for Jackson Square. It's the new building and there's a new boardroom where all the planning and zoning board meetings will be happening. I can't with everybody. Okay, I'll try this one more time. I apologize.
Oh, that was awesome. That was.
The only thing that mattered is that you muted it.
Yeah, why'd you mute it? Please should've just let it go. I was waiting for you to stand up.
So, um, right, so.
Hi.
The new building will no longer be at City, uh, at, uh, at City Hall in the caucus room. There's a brand-new boardroom just for us. Um, we did advertise and we will be advertising, and if you do approve it tonight, to have the meetings in that room, of course, with the caveat that if we are still in this executive order, that we will be virtual. Um, so I, we didn't add that, but, you know, as we've been noticing, we've been doing it meeting by meeting, so however you wanna handle it, I just wanted to make you aware.
Okay. Um, I think that was just handled personally. How's, uh, how's the bike parking at the new place? Same as, as next door?
Oh, we put in those extra racks.
That's what I like to hear. Good, I'll be able to ride my bike.
Designated bike lane.
I love it. Okay, so, uh, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Uh, does anybody have, uh, anybody from the public have any questions, concerns about our calendar for next year?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Okay.
Second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Uh, so. Obviously, staff, do you have any recommendations, any problems?
Uh, no, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Sir Chair. If I may, is this? Is that not, that's the first and third Tuesday of the month?
I actually.
I have a question for, uh, real quickly.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yes.
Is this the last meeting of December on the eighth?
Today is our last meeting of the year.
Okay, then we having a meeting on the twenty-first of December?
We are now.
Next year.
Next year?
Next year.
I know. Isn't that close to the holidays? Is everybody even down or?
It seems a little close to the holidays.
It's like, it's like three, four days away from the holidays.
And there may be other holidays, yeah. Um, I don't, if, do you guys wanna?
Have you noticed that?
Name about that? I did notice that.
Um.
If we only have one meeting in December now, why are we having two meetings in December next year?
I have no preference either way. I'm an atheist, so, uh. So.
Why are you forcing your religion on me?
I, I'm not.
Um, I actually, I, Commissioner Torres, I agree. I saw that. I, I figured, because usually, uh, Chairman, we usually have just one meeting in December, don't we? Am I?
My recollection.
Yeah, for the most part, over the years, I think we.
Yeah. The twenty-first will probably be a problem for me, just because it is, I, I go away, but for the holidays, but who knows if we're gonna be doing Zoom or not, but, uh, yeah, that, that might be a little bit of an issue for me.
Hopefully not. We have a room ring.
I remember of next year, we're gonna be doing this again?
Listen, I hope not, but you never know. There's a super mutant bacteria out there somewhere.
That's what I hear.
But we took that one meeting in December. I know the council only had one meeting. Could we just erase that?
Yeah, I agree.
At that time, except.
Okay, why don't we, uh, if everybody's okay with it, why don't we take the twenty-first off?
Correct. Okay.
And. You know, if we need to, if, if we're in desperate need, maybe we'll talk next year about a special meeting.
We've been doing that for the last two months, special meeting.
Yeah, I know. Um, if we're in, you know, maybe we can talk about a special meeting on the fourteenth or something.
Okay.
Chairman, maybe I'm losing my mind, but I thought we were the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month.
Uh, no, it flips here and there.
Right.
Depending on, you know, how the sun and the moon travel across the sky, uh, the dates change. Some, some, it's the first and third, some months it's the second and fourth. So, okay, we have a floor amendment. We're gonna take the, um, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one off of the calendar for next year.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the twenty twenty-one planning board meeting calendar with the correction of removing twelve twenty-one as the date.
Okay.
Okay, motion and a second.
Okay, uh, Doctor Gonzalez.
I.
Doctor Desai.
I.
Commissioner Torres.
I.
Commissioner Wharton.
I.
Commissioner Allen.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner DeCor.
I.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Uh, I, did you?
She always misses.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know what it is with her. I don't.
Okay.
Chairman, I think we got too many votes.
Waterman.
Yes, Council President Waterman.
Hi.
Okay, and Chairman Langston.
Uh, I'm an I.
Okay. There we go, motion carries.
All better. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, let's go back to correspondence. We have a number of items carried tonight. And we wanted to approve the calendar. So we could give those items dates to be carried to.
Yes. Okay, so. Item number ten, case P two zero dash zero seven zero is carried to January fifth. And question about the notices, everyone's re-noticing or no?
No, these are, we're preserving notice for January fifth right now.
Okay, so that is with preservation of notice. For item number ten. Item number fourteen for four zero seven dash four one three Summit Avenue is carried to January fifth with preservation of notice. Item fifteen, case P two zero dash zero nine four for six fifty Grove Street is carried to January fifth with preservation of notice. Item eighteen, case P two zero dash one three six for fourteen dash sixteen Burma Road is carried to January fifth with preservation of notice. Item twenty, case P two zero dash one four three for ten Journal Square is carried to January fifth with preservation of notice. The presentation of the Jersey City Parking Management Plan for addition to the Jersey City Master Plan Circulation Element is carried, uh, to January fifth with preservation of notice. Review and discussion of the Master Plan Reexamination Report Regarding Amendment to the Jersey City Master Plan Circulation and Land Use Elements is also carried to January fifth with preservation of notice. Item twenty-three for the review and discussion of the retiring of the expired Webster Avenue Redevelopment Plan for Adoption as Regular Zoning is carried to January fifth. Uh, case twenty-five, I mean, item twenty-five for case P two zero dash one two eight for four five four Second Street is carried to January fifth. Uh, item number twenty-six for P two zero dash zero eight three for three zero eight Academy Street is carried to January fifth with preservation of notice.
Okay, I see two hands up. We have Mr. McCann and Mr. Paulino. Can we bring them up?
Yes. And. Okay. And I think someone else may have brought up Eugene. I can't, I don't see his hand raised anymore. Is he on here?
I'm here.
Uh, it's Jim McCann here also.
All right. Council. So. I go first. I know you were just carrying to a date uncertain, but we wanted to save all that extra paper for you and, uh, you know, we're green in Jersey City. Um, we didn't wanna have you notice again.
What, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners and staff and Mr. Chairman and Council. It's Jim McCann. I didn't carry uh, six fifty Grove, if that was the, one of the cases that you called.
Yeah, that you, that's what you sent me an email for today.
I sent you an affidavit of service and publication for tonight's hearing. I have my entire team ready to go tonight. I did not, I, it was carried from last, um, the last agenda, but we're ready to go tonight.
Okay, because you had mentioned carrying it with preservation of notice due to the crowded agenda.
That was, that was an explanation for the last, for the November twenty-fourth. I said we carried it from November twenty-fourth with preservation of notice. And I sent you my affidavit of service, Erica.
Okay, so that, the email was a little confusing. Okay, uh, so never mind for six fifty Grove Street then.
Okay, so we'll be hearing six fifty Grove tonight. Sorry, Council.
Okay, thank you.
And do we have, uh, we have Eugene still on here?
I'm, I'm here. Is that who you called?
Yeah, are you, uh?
I'm on for four fifteen, um, four thirty-five Summit Avenue. I thought you had indicated you carried that. I, I don't know where that came from.
No, four oh seven, four thirteen Summit Avenue.
Okay, I apologize. I, I misheard.
Not a problem, not a problem. And we have one other hand up. I don't know who that is.
Neither do I.
We wanna bring them up just in case it's.
Okay, I'll promote them.
Part of this.
Uh, hello, good morning. I'm a member of the public at large. This is my first council meeting. I thank you for the opportunity to, to speak.
Okay, are you speaking on any of the, the items that were carried tonight?
Uh, potentially, I wanted to clarify whether item number twenty-five, uh, the term carried means that it'll be revisited in January or?
Yes, January fifth will be.
Okay, thank you.
And that, thank you. Okay, right now, that's a date certain, January fifth.
A date certain?
It's definitely January fifth. Now. January fifth could come around and that could change again, unfortunately. Um, but we're, we're saying at this point, it's on for January fifth.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay, so. Six fifty Grove Street is on. That's item fifteen. Okay, so everything else is taken care of?
Yes, yes.
And. Great, all right, let's move on. Uh, we'll call item number seven is case P two zero dash zero two five is a preliminary and final major subdivision plus site plan with C variances for twenty Carbon Place. And Erica, while we're waiting, um, if we could just, uh, maybe get it in writing in an email tomorrow to all the attorneys affected by that, just so everybody understands that they're carried date certain right now to January fifth.
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you.
I can't seem to unmute myself here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we heard you.
Oh, good. There's so many microphones here, I can't tell which is mine. Uh, thank you. I want to make, uh, before we begin, I'd, I'd like to make two corrections. One is that this is actually a minor subdivision. Uh, it's less than four lots. And secondly, that, uh, the only lots that are involved in the site plan, the only lot that's involved in the site plan application is lot twelve, because, uh, there was a, uh, survey error or issue. But that doesn't change anything. The application is still exactly the same in every, every other respect. Um. Counsel, I, I think you have all of my, uh, my submissions in terms of publication and, uh, affidavits of process service.
Was waiting for you to actually place your appearance on the.
Ah, did I not do that? I apologize. Eugene Paulino, um, Genova Burns, I'm appearing here for, uh, Twenty Carbon Place Corp., who is the applicant.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, we already qualified your notice at the last meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So this is carried with testimony taken from November twenty-fourth and notice was exhibit A one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Council.
Uh, I would suggest that we proceed, uh, so that the engineer testifies both as to the subdivision and as to the site plan, uh, for, to save time. Um, you may do this in one vote or two votes. It, it really is your choice. Uh, I just thought that that was a way of, of moving more quickly than we, we, we might, may be able to do another way.
I concur, Council. Do you want us to vote separately as to the subdivisions?
I, I, I don't, uh, the resolution would be the same. It would reference the subdivision, so I don't think it makes a difference to me.
Yeah, let's keep it one vote, just because it's, there's only one case number involved in it.
That's fine, that's fine. So, uh, my client is, is, uh, Twenty Carbon Place Corporation. Uh, the developer of this property is a, uh, is a longtime owner of the property. It's actually a scrap metal, uh, operator. The block in which he is located is, uh, a very industrialized area. It's, it's, is, I don't think there are any residents in, on this block going toward Route four forty. This project was initially presented, uh, to the, to the city, uh, believe it or not, in, in twenty eighteen, and, uh, it went through a number of iterations. Uh, the initial iteration was required at planning, um, or redevelopment plan amendment, and, uh, it was on and off again, but at the end of the day, uh, there was, there is no application now for plan amendment. Uh, there, it was also the subject of intensive community, uh, involvement. I think we had, uh, three community meetings in which, uh, Councilwoman Europe, uh, Prinzere participated, and Councilwoman Denise Ridley also participated. Uh, Freeholder, uh, O'Day was also present, and as well as other public members were there. So it's gotten a lot of vetting from the community at large. The administration was also, uh, actively involved, and of course, included in that is the planning division who, uh, reviewed the plans, uh, that were submitted along the way. Ultimately, uh, our architect, Kieran Kelly, designed, uh, a building that he'll, he'll show you, and I think it's an improvement, but most of all, it is, uh, essentially an as-of-right, uh, application. You'll see that the, um, you'll see that the, uh, the two deviations that we're seeking are really, uh, relatively minor. They do, they, they involve the number of street trees and the separation of the treats, street trees. That's it. So, uh, I have three witnesses. John Cody of Langen Engineering is our engineer, and as I said, he'll testify both as to the subdivision and the site plan, and then we'll move quickly, uh, because I know you have a packed agenda through, uh, the, the site plan application and the architect and our planner. So, Mr. Cote.
Hi, John, can you, uh, hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just wanna swear you in, okay? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Name is John Cote, spelled C-O-T-E. I'm from Langen. I can tell you my company information. I'm from Langen Engineering and Environmental Services in Parsippany, New Jersey.
Mr. Cote, we've, uh, qualified you previously, correct?
Uh, it's been a long time. I just, I can give you my qualifications just to make sure that it's, I could say it's probably going on twenty years now.
Oh, okay, um, give us, actually, yeah, let's do that first.
Sure.
Yep, you could just go over your, your qualification.
My, my background is I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-one. I'm graduate of Stevens Institute of Technology with a bachelor's in civil engineering, and I've testified before multiple planning boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Okay, and your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're qualified. Uh, just give us one sec.
Thank you.
Um, we have Commissioner Torres, uh, wasn't present at the last meeting. Uh, Eddie, you, you know, we really only qualified the notice, but Eddie, you haven't read any of the testimony, correct?
Not from the last meeting, no.
Okay, so.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, the only thing that we did address was notice. We didn't take any actual testimony.
That, that is absolutely correct. We, we dealt with, uh, we dealt with that, and we dealt with a potential objector, whom I understand is no longer objecting.
Right.
And that was it.
Okay, so are we comfortable, uh, having Torres on?
I think it's okay that I go be, uh, listen to the testimony, vote on this project.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure, Council, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. All right, Mr. Cote, go ahead.
So, John, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on your professional, uh, experience. Would you just take us through the subdivision? You're, we're doing a very, very simple subdivision. Just explain it, uh, so that we have a record.
Sure, I'll share my screen here, and this is basically the package that's in the submission that we made. And you should now see what is basically the subdivision drawing as a whole. The subdivision consists of taking the existing one lot and subdividing it into three lots. I'll zoom in on a diagram to illustrate that. On the left is the existing conditions, existing lot twelve, block twenty-two, one oh three. Down the right is the proposed subdivision, consisting of three parcels. Partial A, parcel B, and parcel C. Partial A and parcel C will be subject to the buildings that'll be shown in the site plan. Parcel B is the right-of-way element provided on the project, associated with the ordinance provision for, uh, difference in density based on that provision, providing that. So for simple, uh, I'll just outline quickly, the original lot is one point seven nine six acres. The proposed lot A is point six one eight acres. Uh, parcel B, the right-of-way is point one nine zero acres, and parcel C is point nine six one acres. The overall track is shown on the pictures, as the illustrated in the site plan, uh, excuse me, the subdivision plan shown. And I, it's pretty straightforward. Our interior right-of-way lot is sixty feet wide in accordance with the ordinance requirements.
Okay, that's all the testimony I have with respect to the subdivision itself. Uh, I'm gonna go on now with the testimony with, and if there are any questions as to the subdivision, I'm sure Mr. Cote can take it.
Uh, I have no questions on the subdivision. Anybody else? And, uh, I do see a hand raised already. Um, we'll open it up for public comment after testimony's taken. So just hang in there and, uh, we'll call on you, uh, when we open up public comment.
Now, John, with respect to the, uh, this, the site plan application, which is also being aired this evening, could you testify as to the engineering aspects of that application?
Sure, I'm gonna start with, uh, a picture diagram prepared by MVMK. Uh, Kieran Kelly prepared this, uh, orientation of the site for everyone to give some quick visuals on it. Uh, this is in the package, uh, basically, the site location along Carbon Place with West Side Avenue to the east, four forty to the west, and we are on the north side of Carbon Place. The existing facility is an existing recycling facility. The existing facility is an existing recycling facility. Looking at the site from the west side, looking at the west edge of the existing facility, it's an existing building fronting along the right-of-way, running parallel for the majority of the length of the actual site. Continuing and looking at the eastern end, eastern end terminates in an entrance to the facility with this gated structure here. And then as you make your way just past the facility, looking to the east, you have New Jersey City University's property to the east of the property overall. Looking at what, as far as the existing conditions on our plan, when it was designed, this lot was vacant at the time. Subsequent to that, construction has started on the southerly lot. And this is an image of that six-story building in its state as of, I believe, two, two weeks ago in, in, in current state of its construction. Looking at the site as a whole, this is looking east towards West Side Avenue. And then this is the view along West Side Avenue of New Jersey City University properties adjacent to the east. So then I'll move on to now the site plan proper. So the site plan consists of two main buildings being constructed, one on the west end, one on the east end. The east end is a 12-story building with a 24,508 square foot footprint. Between that and the east building is the 60-foot right-of-way park area that we're proposing on the project, and I'll get into more detail on that a little bit. And the easterly building is a 12-story building with a square foot, or the footprint of 39,792 square feet. The project proposes a total of 252 parking spaces, 181 standard parking spaces, 55 compact spaces, and 8 ADA spaces. Based on the application of using the right-of-way, the project is allowed the density of the 12-story buildings for the 450 units proposed. With respect to our variances, I'm going to just come into the zoning table here. We're asking for two variances. Section V, sorry, 354, 345, excuse me, point 66C1, V, sorry, seven point dash F point seven, excuse me, and regarding the minimum number of tree, street trees. And in addition, the min-max streets tree on center spacing. In the project, we're required to provide 14 trees overall, and we're providing 10. And with regard to the spacing, we're 22 minimum and 35 max. We're providing a 22, 25-foot spacing and a 64-foot max. And those variances are related to the actual layout of the site and some constraints we have to provide both the access driveways to the building proper as well as the right-of-way component of the site and also utilities that service the facility. So all those constraints basically are what dictate the spacing of the trees that we could position along the frontage of the property. So I'll walk through just quickly the, the site plan set, just to illustrate a few points to that relative to the variance. With respect to stormwater and drainage, our building footprints will be at elevation 18. The storm drainage that comes out to the main right-of-way from the westerly building, the Central Park and easterly building are one form of utilities coming out. We have entrances, entrance drives, and I'm going to zoom into the westerly building, coming out, the westerly building on the west end. We have access to the park through the central portion of the park. And then we have access to the easterly building, a driveway for the parking and a driveway for loading. And I'll go a little bit further into that on another, in the next drawing. With respect to the utilities that service the site, go past the drainage, those are the same drainage features, go to the utility plan. The utilities are serviced through the primary right-of-way that's being provided between the buildings. Those access for both water, sewer, electric, gas, telephone, communications are all part of that overall layout that then utilizes the utilities in the public right-of-way. With respect to the layout, this is the landscaping plan. The landscaping plan shows the 10 trees, primary shade trees that are proposed along the street. And from the prior plans with the utilities that are routed through the right-of-way, the entrance drives that access the facilities, the buildings proper, those are all in position where we could between the utilities underground, storm and sanitary and electric, gas and telephone. These are the maximum number of trees we can provide. We did have in the set, the drawing, an illustrative plan. The illustrative plan shows the building on the west, the building on the east, and the 10 trees that are proposed. I did a markup for this presentation of the illustrated plan to show where those trees, if we were trying to comply with the ordinance, would end up. So we would have a conflict with our entrance point here. This is a conflict with the, the utilities that route through that corridor along the center portion of the, the site, the right-of-way. And then on the east end, excuse me, on the east end, we have the second driveway that would interfere with the last tree. So that's the basis of the variance request for both the spacing as well as the number of trees. With respect to the overall site, in terms of the layout of the buildings, and I apologize for bouncing around here, but back to the site plan proper. The, the right-of-way area is dedicated, is, excuse me, is designed as a park area that basically gives access. And I'll zoom in a little bit closer here to see that, to the various points, both servicing the building as well as the lobby area and the retail that's proposed. There's 6170 square feet of retail proposed along the frontage of the property. The lobbies in this, and I'll get into the architectural, can talk a little bit more detail about the buildings proper, but the access to the buildings lobby-wise are along this right-of-way, as well as egress points that are along Carbon Place proper. Overall, the project only has those two variances. Otherwise, we're complying with the rest of the ordinance requirements. And we are, you know, in the ordinance in this respect, we're in the route 440 Culver redevelopment area, the mid-rise B district with respect to the ordinance for this product, for this project.
So, Mr. Cote, the, except for the number of trees and the spacing between the trees, there are no other deviations requested here?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you receive a review, a report from the Division of Engineering relating to this project?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And did you review the conditions of that report?
Yes, I did.
Record. Were there any that were problematical for you?
No, we can address the engineering comments provided to us.
There was an issue, was there not, with respect to the sidewalk? Is that correct?
Sure. The, the engineering comment requested a, recommended a dedication of a five-foot easement along the sidewalk behind the right-of-way proper to provide a five-foot clear section of sidewalk that is considered public access, public right-of-way. I'm not, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant, but I believe that can be accommodated in the, in the site.
Provided it doesn't impact the street.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have from this witness.
Okay, um, yeah, I have no questions, but just, counsel, we would make that a condition of approval that you would comply with engineering comments. You're okay with that? Okay, excellent. Anybody else? Any questions?
Yes, I have. This is Commissioner Charles. I do have a question. Not about the trees and stuff. I know everything is in compliance, but the right of your screen where we exit the vehicle out on Corbin, what is next? Yeah, what is the property next to that? Is there other property or?
No, that's the, that's the university, City University. We are basically looking to extend the sidewalk. And right now, that area is just a, I'll explain it real quick here in this picture. If you look, there's actually a portion of the building is on that portion of the property. That'll be removed, and this will be converted into the sidewalk.
You convert it to sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, so as people turn that corner, they will be confronting a car coming out of the lot, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, this, this is a driveway right now between the two. If you look at the illustration.
Convert this to a public sidewalk.
This, well, the sidewalk that's here is public today. We're just expanding the sidewalk to improve it.
I'm talking about the one on Corbin Street on the alleyway.
Yeah, the alleyway, yeah, the alleyway sidewalk is only going to turn the corner here and just connect to a planter that's here now, so that the finished product looks like a finished area there. So we're going to take, to take the old building shed corrugated metal. You see that actually wraps this corner. That'll be removed, and then this area will be consistent with the sidewalk that runs the length of the project. It'll be an improvement.
Can we have like a safety light, one of the, like the lights or the alarm, does that sound if a car is leaving, when the gate is getting open, that if somebody's turning that corner, they could see? Because you have an access where people are turned, isn't it, or not?
Yeah, this is just a, this is not a major throughfare coming out of here. So the.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, it's just an alleyway. Correct.
Okay. That's all I have, guys. Thank you.
I thank you. Jeff had a question too.
Yes, yes, just one question. Good evening, Mr. Cote.
Good evening.
Uh, so I'm trying to keep up here. So the utilities will all be underground, correct?
Correct, yes.
And so that mean the utility poles are coming down. How would it be streetlights?
Uh, streetlights are provided along, I apologize, I didn't review that. I'll, I'll go to that plan. Streetlights are provided. Yeah, I'm going to add that plan in, just to, I apologize, I didn't cover that earlier. These are the streetlights proposed along Carbon Place. So these will be fixtures that are, be consistent with the PSENG approved fixtures. That's what City Engineering had reviewed in their last letter, and we'll show that compliance with the PSENG fixtures. So it'll be consistent along, they'll be all underground wiring, supporting those light bulbs in between the various trees that we showed on the prior plan.
Okay. All right, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, Jeffrey. Uh, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cote.
Thank you.
Uh, now I'm eager to show you the project proper. So for that purpose, I ask Kieran Kelly to come forward.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
We can. You're a little echoey, though.
Apologies. I think it's because I don't have enough soft, enough soft furnishings in the room. I, I tried, I've tried to fix it. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to, so apologies.
You're an architect, sir.
Minimalism.
I, I love it. I love it.
All right, Karen, let me just swear you in, okay?
Yes.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Kiaran Kelly, K-I-A-R-A-N-K-E-L-L-Y.
Mr. Kelly, good evening. We've qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, you're qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kieran, you've been working on this project and designing the project since, since the get-go here, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So now we, you, you have this as-of-right 12-story project. I'd like you to show it to the board. Describe it both externally and, and as internally through the floor plan and go through it quickly. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. So John did an excellent job at explaining the existing context, I believe, using this slide, so I will skip over this one. Just to give you a very, very basic understanding of the property, it's an irregular-shaped parcel. As John said, it's just over 77,000 square feet, that being just under 1.8 acres. And you can see it's L-shaped with a prop, with just slightly shy of 400 linear feet frontage on Carbon Place. Carbon Place, of course, is a narrow right-of-way. Current gets 40 feet right-of-way. Now, the property lies within the mid-rise B district of the Route 440 Culver redevelopment plan. And one of the key components of that redevelopment plan is it seeks to introduce new connections running north side, running north-south throughout the redevelopment area to increase connectivity, both from a pedestrian standpoint, but also to relieve traffic congestion. And one of those proposed right-of-way runs directly through the center of our parcels. So you can see here, highlighted in yellow, this is the proposed connection between Carbon Place and Fisk. Now, of course, not all of it is within our property. Majority of it is actually between Fisk and the back of our property. The idea being that the entirety would be a future right-of-way connection, but for now is all we control is that area within our property. The air highlighted in B here. Our proposal for now is to propose that as a public park or landscape plaza with the idea that it would one day expand into a full right-of-way to Fisk. But when, when allowing for that right-of-way, it essentially splits our lot, as was the subdivision, into these two smaller parcels. The one on the left on the west side, parcel A, at just under 27,000 square feet. And the one on the right, as you see on the eastern side, is just shy of 42,000 square feet. That's parcel C. Now, regarding that somewhat narrow 40-foot right-of-way on Carbon, one of the things that we initially wanted to do immediately, and that was to create a 10-foot front yard setback. And that is the area just highlighted here schematically in green. It's not a requirement of the redevelopment plan, but we, we thought it was certainly a benefit to the project and the area at large. And it allows us to create that wider sidewalk that John described. Now, the thing about the, the right-of-way, the provision for the 60-foot right-of-way, for those properties affected by the requirement to provide this, they are thereby entitled to a bonus provision, the right-of-way bonus, which takes the baseline FAR for the property and offers them 120% of that FAR. So in this district, your baseline FAR is 5.5. With this bonus provision, that brings us to a maximum permitted FAR of 6.6, which in our case is just slightly over 500,000 square feet of gross buildable area. Now, the second thing that the redevelopment plan allows for is an addition in height, so as to accommodate that additional FAR. So there's a height provision part of this bonus, which says that you are permitted, the minimum amount of store is necessary to accommodate that additional FAR. So where the maximum height in the mid-right B district without the bonus provisions, eight stories, in the case of our building, it brings us to 12 stories as of right. So we're proposing two 12-story buildings. How that schematic site plan translates to the, the, the site plan proper, you see here, this is the first floor plan as was submitted in our site plan drawings. I've just colorized it for, for the presentation. The first thing I would draw your attention to is that center in the section. That is the public park or the landscape plaza that I'm describing, the provision for the future right-of-way. The blue areas on the plan are what are retail space. Now, under the redevelopment plan, retail is not a, a specific requirement, but is recommended in this area. And so we're providing two retail components on those corners. The corners facing both Carbon Place and the new public park. And then you'll see there's a smaller secondary retail space further to the east on the eastern building. And collectively, we're providing 6,170 square foot of retail space. The areas in yellow behind are our main residential lobbies. And the only thing really that I want to bring your attention to here, they're, they're accessed off the public park, but we've made special provision for additional, like mail and package rooms. Because as we all know, in the times we're living in, everybody tends to be doing all their shopping online, so we've made sure that we have adequate provision for that. Behind that further, you'll see the various service elements of the building. These are, these are kind of the utility rooms, the transformer rooms, sprinkler, gas meter rooms, all the things which are served by the utilities that John described as coming through the center underground in this park. And then the rest of the floor plan is, is, is really occupied, screened behind is the parking areas. So we're permitted 100% lot coverage on the first floor. Once we remove the park and also that 10-foot setback I described, we're proposing 83% coverage on the first floor. It's 42 parking spaces on the western building on the first floor and 84 parking spaces on the eastern building on the first floor. Next, we go to the second floor plan. We're proposing two parking levels. This would be the upper of the parking levels. The interesting thing to point out at this level is that the redevelopment plan calls for a rear yard setback, and that it should be introduced at this second level. So we require a 30-foot rear yard setback. By providing the new cut room, the new right-of-way, what's after happening essentially is we've now created two corner lots, two corner conditions. And as we all know, on a corner property, it is the shortest frontage, which is the front yard. And so opposite that is the rear yard. So you'll notice that on the western building, in fact, Carbon Place is not the front of the building, it is the public park. And so the rear yard setback in that case is on the western side. On the eastern building, that is not the case. It is the northern side, which On the eastern building, that is not the case, it is the northern side, which gets the rear yard setback. So here we've introduced our, our rear yard setbacks at the second floor. The, uh, building on western side has thirty-six spaces on the upper level and ninety spaces in the eastern building. Just to give you a brief summary, we're providing two hundred and fifty-two parking spaces where two hundred and twenty-five is required. Of the two hundred and fifty-two, that's a hundred and eighty-nine standard size spaces, fifty-five complex, which is twenty-two percent, and eight ADA spaces. There was a question in the engineering report we, we received, was the number of ADA spaces adequate? Uh, I believe that it is. For two hundred and fifty-two parking spaces, we require eight, or sorry, we require seven ADA spaces, and we're providing eight. Um, we are providing three hundred and seventy-seven bike parking spaces throughout the project and also two loading bays. We have an off-street loading bay, uh, within each of the buildings. Once we get above that second floor, we hit our third floor, which is, which is our first residential floor. And at this point, you see the footprint of the buildings changes, it reduces considerably, um, because we are introducing double-loaded residential corridors. So the building on the western side becomes an L shape, and the building on the eastern side becomes this C shape. And both of those shapes wrap around, uh, open-air courtyard. So half of the unit's faced towards the street, half the unit's faced towards the courtyard. The coverage at this level is fifty-two percent. On a typical residential floor plate, we're proposing forty-eight units per floor. This is levels four through eleven. It's the very same plan as you just saw, but in this case, we do not have that common access terrace. This is the twelfth floor, the top residential floor. And on this floor, the difference we've made is that we're introducing slightly larger units. And also these areas marked in, in a light blue color are the common amenity terrace, or comedy, common amenity spaces, excuse me. We have approximately eight thousand square foot of common amenity space throughout both buildings. On the roof of the project, we are providing extensive green roof and common access roof terraces. Where we are providing for some mechanicals, they're all going to be both visually and acoustically screened. And you'll see on the eastern building, we're providing a common access pool for the residents. The interesting thing is, the redevelopment plan is set up in a way that it, as I described it, requires setbacks of various levels. On all of those setback levels, we're providing accessible and green roof spaces. This is quite a complex sheet. I won't go into it in much detail, but it gives a good breakdown of the unit size, type, and distribution. To give you a very brief summary, at the top of the page, you'll see that, uh, overall, we're proposing four hundred and fifty residential units. Um, and I'm sorry, my, my Zoom, um, my Zoom menu has just blanked it off for me. But of that, there's eighty-nine studios, I believe there's two hundred and fifty-five one-bedrooms and a hundred and eight two-bedrooms. The studio sizes range from four hundred and ninety-five feet to seven hundred and seventy-five square feet. The one-bedrooms range from five hundred and seventy square feet to eight hundred and ninety square feet. And the two-bedrooms range from eight hundred and eighty square feet to one thousand three hundred and seventy square feet. This page, I, I won't dwell on, but it, it gives you an idea that this was in the submission package, it shows you how those units layout. Um, and, uh, I, I believe that they all work very well. You'll see even the, the smaller of the studio units, even around at the five hundred or four ninety square foot mark is still, is still a very, one, one of the things that actually makes these units uh, quite nice, and I'll show you when I describe the elevations, is that we're providing a lot of floor-to-ceiling glazing, particularly on smaller units. So that even where the, the overall footage of the unit, um, is lower, there's, uh, there's a abundant light and air. So this is an image of, uh, the rendering of the proposed project, the two twelve-story buildings, as seen from the south across Carbon Place. Now, the building that John described at the outset, the seven-story building, which is currently being constructed on the other, other side of Carbon Place from us, is essentially in the foreground here, but for the purpose of this rendering, I omitted it just, I took artistic liberty so you could get a sense of the overall frontage of the building. So while the massing of the building is essentially determined by those setbacks, as I described in the redevelopment plan, and also the lot configuration, from an aesthetic standpoint, we, we really wanted to echo the industrial character of this neighborhood. But as we always like to do in redevelopment areas, we, we, we want the architecture in a way to kind of, to speak of, how do I say? Speak of the, the renewal or the, 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 the energy that we think that redevelopment areas should, should provide. In other words, the architecture should kind of have, have a unique look and should be exciting so as to promote that idea of regeneration. And in this case, we quite, quite literally wanted to put a modern slant on that traditional warehouse architecture. So you'll see that in both cases, we've introduced these diagonal kind of lines down the front of the building by way of these recessed balconies, which separate between two tones, a lighter tone of brick and metal, uh, and a, and a red brick and metal, kind of two contrasting elements. But the two buildings in this way also frame and flank the public park. This image is a street view taken from Carbon Place looking at, of course, this, this park that we're describing. And there's a number of things I just want to touch on here, but perhaps the first is the idea of the two-corner retail units that you see. And in fact, they extend back to what would be the residential entries of the building. It's as if we're kind of pulling up the corner of the building and creating these, this angled, uh, indentations at the street level. And where you have this, this ceiling, you have a very rich wood material which lines the exterior ceiling at that point. That ceiling continues through seamlessly into the retail space and the lobbies. And at ground level, the hard surface of the park, again, continues seamlessly through the glass storefront into the space. And then the storefront itself is framed, so the idea is that the public park essentially extends into the building and vice versa. We're trying to break down this hard corner condition. So while the park itself is sixty-foot long, from fifty feet before you even reach the corner, you get unobstructed views through these retail spaces and the lobbies to your park. And so it really, from a visual perspective, it really feels to open up that space and make it more public and inviting. But within the space itself, and you can perhaps see it more clearly from this raised view, essentially, we're providing a series, a, 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 a series of varying hard surfaces with, with, uh, planted, uh, soft areas. In the foreground here, we're showing an idea of a, a, a kind of a large feature of public sculpture. And this is a placeholder for now, but the idea would be that, should we be approved here tonight, that we can progress the design of this, the programming of this park uh, with planning staff and, and hopefully, uh, input from the, from the public at large. But because this is to be a future right-of-way, essentially in the, in the future, it will be a street. As I described, we have utility rooms and certain access requirements on this, from this area. We do need to provide hard surfacing, and this is why we provided that drop curve on the street level, by the way. This would be a public surface requirement to reach those transformer rooms at the back. But you'll see that we're trying to make it a warm and inviting space, we're actually trying to lead people into the various spaces that flank onto the building.
Kieran, I don't want to inter, interrupt the, the, the creative flow, but the, 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 the property, the, the, the public space is really a public-private partnership in that the developer will be responsible for maintaining that park permanently. And that the easement granted for that park is a permanent easement and, uh, and, and accessible to the public subject to the standard park restrictions. I, I don't know what, what they are in terms of the timing, that they would be open and closed, but it would be the standard park restrictions of the entire, uh, city. So, uh, is there anything else, Kieran?
No, I just very quickly wanted to touch, this is a view from the rear, as I'm sure everybody, um, is interested to see. Uh, you know, obviously, uh, two twelve-story buildings, uh, uh, quite a lot of frontages, even at the rear. This would be the view from Fisk, um, which is a secondary facade, but still we've made an effort to make it a very interesting, um, facade with, with variation of materials and patterns. And just while unfortunately I don't have physical materials here to show you, this is the material palette. Essentially, there's a two-tone, uh, uh, kind of, uh, pattern happening. We have the, the, the wider or the lighter brick pattern shown here, which is a savanna brick with an alpine white accent. And then that contrasts with the rustic, kind of traditional red brick tone, which is a heritage velour with a Midtown Ironsport spot accent. The infill panels that you see here are, are very interesting. They are actually folded metal, so composite aluminum panels with a fold. So the idea is that as the sun travels across the sky throughout the day, it casts different shadows and it creates movement in the facade. So that is the proposed colors there. Working with the lighter brick tone would be a bronze, uh, metal composite aluminum panel. And working with the red brick tone would be a champagne composite aluminum panel. And then everywhere where you have the standard, you know, infill brick metal, we would be using a gray, which is a very, a kind of a dark charcoal gray color. Um, we replicate, we, we cannot do for, for various reasons, we cannot do the folded metal panels everywhere. So where we're restricted, for whatever reason, either by proximity to the property line, we would propose to do the very same color pattern, but in a two-tone cement board. Um, and, and, and that's it. That's the, uh, that's the material palette, and that's the overall presentation.
I have no more questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Um, the only question I have, I mean, first of all, thank you for the detailed presentation. Uh, makes it easy on us. Um, the only thing I didn't see, if we could go back to the twelfth floor slide uh, with the amenity space.
Yes.
There it is. Um, I couldn't bring it up on, on my computer, that the page was crashing on me. Uh, where are the egress openings from the amenity space into the corridors?
Okay, so it, it, that's a very good question. Um, the, the doors are Yeah, the doors are not shown, but there is one door shown on the eastern building, on the west building, it's not shown. The truth is that that would be determined once the interior layout of that space is determined at, at, at the design development stage. But we would require two means of egress from both those spaces. So they would be provided at a, a certain, um, remote distance requirement based on the building, uh, on the building code. But there's adequate provision for it, because in both cases, the corridor either runs all the way along the exterior or straight through the middle. So we have adequate provision to do so.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. I didn't see him on there, and I'm, I'm sure if they're not installed, our fire inspectors will pick him up.
No, it's a great question.
Okay, uh, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions? Actually, I did have one more that I wrote down. Um, on the drop curb in the, uh, the public right-of-way.
Okay.
There's, I believe, bollards there.
I, I would rather, if you don't mind, perhaps John can speak to that. Um, I had shown ball, bollards on the rendering, the idea was that they were, they could be dropped. Um, but in honesty, I, I think John would be better placed to speak to the, uh, to the drop curb.
I could bring John back on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, uh, moving that through. So, yeah, the intent was, uh, the, the purpose at hand is to service the area along the right-of-way for the utilities that Karen was just talking about. Um, with respect to being bollards, we don't, I, we don't have proposed on our site plan proper. Um, it's an idea that could be done, you know, whether it be removable or not. But ultimately, that access point is meant to allow for a veh, for a vehicle to service the utility rooms in the back.
Absolutely, I understand that. Um, my only concern is, I hate to say it, but if, you know, somebody sees a driveway, they're gonna pull in. So I think a removable, uh, removable barrier, you know, not necessarily barrier, but it takes a bollard of some sort would certainly, uh, be warranted there.
I understand.
Okay, so, um, I, I guess I would leave that up to work with planning staff on something like that.
And I believe that's the comment in the engineering report to look at the access of that to prevent people from using it as a driveway. Other than for service purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to see the, you know, the retail space loading in and out through there as well.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Alright, thank you, Mr. Kelly, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'll stop sharing.
My last witness is, uh, Charles Height, uh, of Jezner Robin, as our planner. Uh, he's gonna speak to the, the, uh, the deviations requested and to the negative positive criteria under the act. Charles?
Do see, uh, again, I see a hand raised. Uh, we're gonna open it up for public comment in a couple minutes, as soon as, uh, Mr. Height testifies.
Alright, let me just swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height, C.H.A.R.L.E.F., H.E.Y.D.T.
Good evening, Mr. Height. Uh, again, we've qualified you previously. It's our first meeting in December. Is your license current in December?
It still is.
Okay, you're qualified.
Charles, could you quickly go through the planner and planning aspects here and the, uh, negative positive criteria and the statement of principle points that you submitted?
Yes, uh, we did prepare the statement and the principle point, so it's, it's a good summary. Um, this is straightforward variance requests, uh, before the board. We, as noted, we do comply with all the bulk and use requirements in the redevelopment plan. Um, we work very diligently at trying to make virtually an as-of-right project. Um, Mr. Code Day did define and, and provide a good overview as to the specifics of the variances. Um, number of street trees, distance between street trees. Um, in terms of the planning justifications, this is a very basic C2 test where the benefits of providing the, the driveways to access the ramps, as well as that, uh, interior courtyard all set the, um, negative aspects of not providing the additional three street trees. Um, there's a very nice courtyard in the middle. Uh, it's, it's encouraged in the plan, it's an element of the, of the plan, and we're integrating in this. That's also an offset to the property in terms of the, the green and, and the trees, um, with this application. Uh, in terms of the negative criteria, uh, I don't think there's any sort of substantial detriment to the public welfare. This is going to be a vast improvement to the streetscape. Buildings along the frontage, retail spaces at the corner, and eleven street trees notwithstanding. Uh, in terms of the zone plan or redevelopment plan, uh, I guess I'll just call your attention to one of the goals uh, of the redevelopment plan, to provide for the orderly phase conversion of vacant land and antiquated land, industrial land uses and buildings within the redevelopment, redevelopment area to a modern, integrated, mixed-use community. This project checks that box in full, so I don't think there's any substantial impairment, and it's a great project for the, uh, for the neighborhood.
I have no more questions for this witness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Height. Um, I have no questions for Mr. Height. Anybody else? Okay, counsel, that's your presentation?
That is my presentation. I ask for approval of the subdivision and the site plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. I see one hand raised already. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, I'm promoting numbers, the phone number seven three two four three two eight four four one. You may now speak.
I don't think.
Do you want to just remind them how to unmute?
It looks like it's muted.
Yeah, it's star six or star nine, I can't remember.
Star nine is to raise your hand. I'm not sure about unmuting.
Hello, is that better?
Can you hear me?
I do apologize, my first time.
No problem, I just want to swear you in, okay?
Certainly.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Certainly, it's Joseph Gallucci, G.A.L.L.U.C.C.I.
Mr. Gallucci, good evening. Uh, we have five minutes for you.
Okay, I am the prop, the owner of Forty Carbon Place. And I've been on Carbon Place for twenty-something years, and I know the people next door at Twenty Carbon Place. And I do think it's a great project. Um, it looks beautiful. My only concerns are, obviously, our buildings are connected, so demo would be an issue for me, no concern. And also, uh, setbacks. It looks like there was a thirty-foot setback from the west end of the first floor of the building, so I just want to confirm that.
Uh, yes, if I could respond, there is a thirty-foot, there's a thirty-foot setback from your property. It occurs at the second floor, not at the first floor. At the first floor, um, we have a wall which we built up to the property line.
Okay, um, what about demo?
Well, obviously.
Since we are connected.
Yeah, well, well, there's really two, there's two approaches there. Of course, it's typical to build this type of building in, 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 you know, this urban environment like this. Prior to construction, I'm sure that we could do a, you know, a pre-construction survey of your building. But most importantly, we don't, we don't currently know what the foundation design will be here, but most likely, it would be piles and pile caps. So there are minimally invasive ways, uh, of doing piledriving, particularly most proximate to your property. So we could even consider heel occupies, piles in that area next to your property if it wasn't, if it was a concern. But everything would be done to ensure minimal impact. But everything would be done to ensure minimal impact.
Okay, and also obviously going twelve stories up, I have concerns since I am right there on the property line of safety for my building and my tenants and.
Well, where, uh, the, the owner and developer is required to comply with all of the Jersey City ordinances and state ordinances. And that would include safety of adjoining properties. So I, I think, uh, will be, there'll be inspections. And I'm sure there'll be rigorous compliance, uh, by the owner.
Okay, well, would we be, um, contacted when demo would be starting and all, you know, would be in some kind of copy line?
No, no question about it.
Okay. Okay, well, I do wish you guys luck with, with the property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallucci. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, see two more hands raised?
Okay, so I'm promoting, uh, Vanessa.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you guys?
Are you able to turn your video on at all?
Uh, let's see. Uh, yes.
We got, hello. Where are you in, okay?
Hello.
I just want to swear you in. Can you raise your right hand?
Sure.
You swearing testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Vanessa Saldana, spelled, um, V-A-N-E-S-S-A. Last name S-A-L-D-A-N-H-A.
Good evening. Uh, we have five minutes for you.
Okay, um, so I'm currently a unit owner at, uh, six, seven, three Bergen Avenue. Um, I believe there was a call about this property previously, which I wasn't a part of. Um, but I was told that I could join this, um, call to discuss that. Um, however, I, I live on the second floor of that building and I have, um, three windows in my unit and a balcony as well. That would be facing the lot on which there is a proposed, uh, property to be built.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. Um, you're talking about the property.
At six, six, nine Bergen Avenue.
Bergen Avenue, correct?
Yes, yeah, so I currently live in six, seven, three. So I imagine then the one next door will be the six, six, nine.
Okay, we're not even, we're not on that application yet.
Okay.
Um, I, I couldn't even guess on a time yet.
Actually, that item is now going to be carried. I just received notice from the, through email from the attorney.
Oh. Okay, uh, so are we putting them on January fifth?
Yes.
Okay, so. I'm sorry, ma'am. We're, uh, we're not hearing that tonight.
Okay, all right.
Hold it. So, uh, yeah, that'll be on January fifth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else from public, please raise your hands if you want to comment. If you're calling in, you can press star nine. Okay, I don't see anybody else.
You know, public, I moved to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded to close public. Public is closed. Uh, Erica, do you have anything to add?
I provided, um, a staff memo to, uh, the applicant's attorney. I just want you to know that was received and if you accept the conditions outlined in the report.
Yes, yes.
Other than that, I do not have any additional comments on this application.
Okay, uh, thank you, Erica. And, uh, counsel, we do have. We do have three conditions, uh, that were outlined. I'm sorry, two conditions, but I'd like to add another one. Uh, I'll read them back to you. Uh, you're gonna comply with the engineering comments. Uh, the second condition is to work with staff on some sort of removable bollard at the street level drop curb. And I am gonna put a, or ask for a condition, uh, just to continue to work with Mr. Gallucci next door and. You know, make sure demo goes as smoothly as possible and to notify him before any demolition starts.
That's acceptable to, that's acceptable to me and my client, I'm sure. That the reference to the bollard in your second, it, it's really, uh, you don't mean, uh, just a bollard. You mean any method of including, uh, access to the driveway?
Yes, yeah, I'm just using bollard as a, a blanket term.
I, I understand.
From dropping in there.
I just wanted to clarify that, so when I want.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave that up to staff, uh, work that out. If there's any problem, you know. We'll have to have a later discussion, but I trust them.
So do I.
Make a motion then at this, uh, time to, uh, approve case P two zero dash zero two five. As presented to the board with the conditions noted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with conditions.
Okay, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Takor?
Aye.
Council President Waterman?
Aye.
Doc, Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
I just want to thank you guys for the detailed presentation. I'm very familiar with the area. Um, very nice project and continue to engage the neighbor as to the processes as they noted their concerns this evening. I'm an aye.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Um, yeah, Mr. Kelly, it's a, a, a great designer. I, I really like it. Um, that window, the window on the retail spaces that, you know, draw you in from the public space. Um, that, you know, softens up to the corners is, is really interesting. I, I really enjoy that. Um, so I'm gonna vote aye. It's a good project.
Okay, motion carries. All in favor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Mister, Mister Chair, just for the record, I'd just like to remind people that case P two zero dash zero six nine. Uh, six, six, nine Bergen Avenue is now carried to January fifth with preservation of notice.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We appreciate it. Okay, so let's move on down the line. Once again, um, item number ten has been carried for six, two, six Newark Ave to a date. Certain January fifth, so we're gonna move to item eleven is case P two zero dash zero three nine. Uh, is a minor subdivision for twenty-eight Pierceal Avenue.
Yeah, promoted Tom Lee.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, Erica, if you could just make sure that I have, uh, Catherine Gregory, who is my planner. Alan Feld, who is my architect. And I believe I do not have my surveyor, Steve Kussler, this evening, but. If he's there, I would, I would request that he be promoted.
Sorry, who was the second person you said?
Uh, that would be Alan Feld. While they're being promoted, everybody, uh, good evening. For the record, Tom Lean of Connell Foley, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a notice application, so counsel, if you would just, uh, confirm you have received our affidavit.
Counsel, I am just looking for it. I thought I had seen it. Here it is. So counsel, I am receiving the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to twenty-eight Pierceal Avenue here in the city. All does appear to be in order and we can go ahead and mark that as A1 for purposes of the record. And counsel, I have one that was submitted in October. And then carried to this evening, correct?
That, that's correct. Uh, this has been carried three times, I believe, from early October until today's date.
Very good.
Thank you. Uh, the application before the board this evening is, uh, a little unique. Uh, we are asking for a subdivision of an oversized parcel that is in the R1A area. And as long as I've been doing this, I don't believe the board has ever had an application in the R1A before. Uh, it is a zone area that was specifically designed to accommodate, um, some older historic properties. That are normally an R1 properties. Um, and it's really for when there is a historic property that has a, a larger lot. Then would normally be accustomed to an R1 property. Uh, normally, as you're all aware, twenty-five by a hundred is the standard in the R1. In the R1A, it's a, uh, forty by a hundred. This lot is actually very unique for the, uh, the R1A in that it's fifty by one twenty-five, so it's a, it's a very oversized lot. What we're asking for today is to subdivide that property into two twenty-five by a hundred and twenty-five lots. Which would be even larger than what is permitted in the R1 property. There is a, an existing property that is, uh, at twenty-eight Pierceal. Uh, it is historic. Uh, we cannot tear it down. But what we are asking today is for the board to accommodate a subdivision that would allow another one and two family home. To sit on the subdivided lot. Uh, this is a little unique, again, because we don't really get these sorts of applications. The R1A really was designed to keep these types, uh, the type of house that is sitting currently at twenty-eight Pierceal on the property. Uh, however, we feel that the neighborhood that's around it no longer really accommodates these types of, uh, of, of houses. Uh, as a matter of fact, across the street, they are mostly twelve and a half by a hundred. So we think that this is a, a property that actually, uh, goes well with the type of subdivision we're proposing. Though we're not proposing that you, uh, approve the house that we're going to eventually build on the newly subdivided lot. We do actually have an architect here today to show, uh, a rendering of that type of home. Um, and I think the most important testimony you're here to, you're gonna hear today is from our planner. So, uh, the first person I would actually, uh, have come up is, uh, uh, our planner, Ms. Gregory.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And, um, when it comes to Mr. Feld's testimony, let's just keep that as, as brief as possible.
Literally just gonna be him showing you the rendering. If you have any questions about that rendering, uh, he's there to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Catherine, you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Just want to swear you in. You swearing testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Catherine, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, last name is Gregory, G-R-E-G-O-R-Y.
Ms. Gregory, good evening. Uh, we have qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're qualified. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Gregory, before you start, I just want to correct a couple of things. Um, the actual agenda this evening says that we are creating two conforming lots. That's not correct, right?
Correct, that, that, the, cor- correct that the notice is not correct.
Okay. You're asking the board to approve his two non-conforming lots. That's right, right?
Yes, that is true.
Okay, and so your testimony is gonna be based largely around why those two non-conforming lots. That would otherwise be conforming in the R1 but are non-conforming in R1A. Why you feel that those are appropriate and that the variances that we're asking for this evening can be justified?
Yes.
Um, if, if we could just dive into that notice question real quick. Um, counsel, it's, I, I mean, I knew it was wrong on our agenda. Um, what did you notice for?
Our note.
The word notice shouldn't have been used, Chairman. Uh, it's wrongly identified on the agenda.
Correct.
The notice is in order, so.
Okay.
The application is as presented by the applicant who is just wrongfully identified on the agenda.
And, and Chairman, if I can point out, we, we did do a catch-all saying that any, uh, variances. That were, uh, approved by the board this evening, you know, we, we, we requested that.
Okay, um, usually the catch-all, I have no problem with, but if, you know, if it was noticed wrong. You know, the public wouldn't know that.
I completely understand, but our notices do comply.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, the note, the notice was correct. It was, it was an error on the agenda from previous. When it was first, uh, listed. And, uh, for whatever reason, the, the, the change never got in, so.
Okay.
The notice is correct.
Okay, Ms. Gregory, sorry for the delay. Go ahead.
No, no worries. Um, may I, uh, share my screen?
Sure.
Oh, uh, let's see. Um, where are my photos? Oh, I apologize. Oh, okay, found what I was looking for. There we go. Okay, um, so we're here tonight seeking, um, a subdivision with variances for the property located at twenty-eight Pierceal Avenue. Um, what you see on the screen right now is a zoning map. And as you'll see, our property is actually located right here under the R in the R1A zone. And as you can see, this is a very small R1A zone. And there's another R1A zone up here, um, but we're surrounded by R1 properties in the majority. So there's only five properties that are reas- uh, excuse me, rezoned, that are zoned, R dash one A. If I may. Um, going through the surrounding area and the property in question. Uh, these are photographs that were taken by myself back in May. Um, and this is, um, our site right here. And going forward with the photographs, this is actually to the left of our property and that would be going north on Pierceal. Again, going north on Pierceal, so you can see basically the, um, development pattern that's located on the east side of the street. And the sizes of the homes. I mean, that's gonna be important later. I'm gonna bring up some testimony to that effect. This is actually, um, opposite of our property. This is on the west side of Pierceal Avenue. So these are some of the structures that are located across the street. This would be directly across the street, this photograph. And also going north on Pierceal, but on the left side of the street. Um, and you can also see what the parking pattern is like, um, as well on the street, because this is one of the streets that's a little bit wider. Um, and so the parking is not actually parallel. Going forward, uh, this is to the right of the subject property. This would be the house located right next to our property. Um, to the southeast, I guess you would say. Um, and then going forward, and this is actually the corner property right here.
And Ms. Gregory, before you go on, we do have to mark these. I don't believe they were in the packet.
Um, no, they were not. So how, would you like to do it as a set?
Yes.
And then I can email it to, um, Mr. Alampi? Would that work?
You can send them into planning. How many photos are there?
Now I have to go back. I'm not quite sure. I apologize. Um.
And can we also mark the, um, you, you brought up the zoning map that specifically showed where R1A?
Yes.
Uh, I don't think we have that either.
So, so counsel, I, I would request that the, the zoning map be marked as A2 while the, uh, the, the photos be marked as A3.
Is that not our zoning map?
No, that, that is. It's an excerpt from your zoning map.
Two, since it's an excerpt anyway, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Notice on it. And how many photos do you have, Ms. Gregory?
Do you know how many I went through? Um, I'm gonna say there's about ten.
Okay. Just make sure you submit ten.
Okay. Okay, um, again, uh, to the right of this photograph is, um, our subject property. This is the house that's located on the property, again, looking north. Um, and that's, um, another photo of our property when it was in a little bit worse shape. Okay, and wait, how do I get out of this? Oh, stop, share. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I've been doing this a while and I'm still, I'm still figuring it out. I apologize. Um, so, uh, so since we are here tonight, um, for a couple of the C variances. Oh, actually, you know what? I'm gonna share my screen again. I apologize. I wanted to get the tax map up there. Um, this is gonna go to a little bit of my testimony, so.
Chairman, we can mark that as A4 since we're marking our own document.
Please, let's make that A4.
Okay, great.
And that's the tax map of the area, Ms. Gregory?
Yes, yes, this is sheet two ninety-five. Of your, your set of tax maps.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and our property is located right here. It's lot twenty-six and. Yes, and our property is located right here. It's lot 26 and block 29503. And the reason that I have this up is just to show the surrounding lotting pattern. I know that it's been stated not only by our attorney but in our principal point statement that the majority of the lots in the surrounding area are indeed smaller than our lot. And while we do realize that there are a number of lots that are located along Pierceall right here that are located in the R1A district, I believe that we actually do meet the intent and purpose of the R1A zone, and I'm going to get to that when I go through my testimony. So we are seeking C variances. There's two types, the C1 and the C2. The C1 is in cases of hardship, and I don't know that we're claiming hardship. But I would say that we are looking for a C2 variance where I do believe that the purposes of zoning will be advanced and the benefits derived by the variance would outweigh any detriments. In terms of the lot area and lot width, 4,000 square feet is required and also 40 feet is required in lot width. We are proposing two lots at 3,125 square feet and 25 feet in width. And that's for each of the boat, excuse me, each of the two lots. Now, with that said, I do believe that it's in better conformity to the existing development pattern as the majority of lots in the neighborhood are smaller lots, even if they are in the R1 zone, because we don't zone in a vacuum. And to go to the purpose of the R1A zone, I'd like to just quote it first and then get to the root of it. "The purpose of this district is to preserve the pattern, quality, and architectural individuality of the existing detached one and two family homes and to discourage subdivision and demolition. The district is similar to the R1 zone, except that it is intended to protect the character of streets where larger houses are typical and the predominant lot size is larger than the standard 20 by 100 lot size for Jersey City." Now, there's a couple of parts to that that I'd like to speak to. Number one, we are still protecting the character of streets. Number two, the houses located in the R1A zone are not larger than those located along the rest of the block. I did an analysis. And this is from the tax records of the square footage of the homes. So I'm just going to go through them for you. Lot 33 on the east side of Pierceall Avenue, located in block 29503 right here. The square footage of that home is 2,544 square feet. Lot 32 is 2,320 square feet. Lot 31 is 2,856 square feet. Lot 30, 2,934 square feet. Lot 29, 2,534 square feet. Lot 28, this one is a little bit smaller. This one is 1,570 square feet. Lot 27, 2,676 square feet. Our lot, 2,584 square feet. As you can see, our lot has a house that is comparable size to all those that are located to the north and all are on 25-foot lots. The only house that's actually larger on the block is actually on lot 25, which is the smaller lot, which is interesting. It has a lot width of 37.5 feet and it has 3,698 square feet. But if you notice, it actually kind of has a third story. Obviously, there's a different type of roof that's located on that house. But I think that that speaks to why that house happens to be larger in square footage than the rest of them, because if you look at the aerial that's actually even located in your planner's report, the footprint isn't actually much different than any of the other homes that are located along that block. Following suit, lot 24 has a home of 2,518 square feet. And then lastly, the corner lot has a house with 1,936 square feet. So with that said, when we talk about what the purpose of the R1A zone is, I think we are meeting that intent because there are not larger houses with the exception of one that's actually located on a smaller lot. And so obviously, that lot would never be subdivided. But that's the only one on the entirety of the streetscape that happens to be larger. All the rest are actually comparable and they are with majority being located on the 25 by 100 foot lots. So therefore, we do believe that we are in better character with the neighborhood by allowing the variances. Just as well, while, no, I did not actually do an analysis of what the side yards were of all the homes that are located along the block, you did see from the photos that I would say that the majority of the homes, with the exception of perhaps on the one side of some of the R1A lots, they do not actually meet the five-foot requirement and the 10-foot for the both sides, where we are proposing .81 feet and then 1.71 feet for proposed lot 26.01. I do believe it fits in with the existing development pattern based on my visual analysis without actually going out and having a yardstick to measure. In terms of the positive criteria, I do believe that we promote Purpose A, which talks about promotion of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And I know that I've used this case before, the case of Anfuso versus Sealy, found that promotion of a state policy was found to promote the general welfare. And the reason that I say that is because Jersey City is located in an area, Planning Area 1, where it provides for most of the state's redevelopment. And the idea is that most of the redevelopment is to happen in areas with existing infrastructure. Clearly, we have existing infrastructure here. We have existing roads. We have existing sewers and all of those things. So I do believe we promote Purpose A. And I also believe that we promote Purpose C, which talks about providing adequate light, excuse me, light air and open space. I also believe we promote Purpose I, which talks about promoting a desirable visual environment. And I kind of wish that the architect had gone first to show the pretty rendering so that I could say that after the fact, but you're going to see those in a moment. And also a Purpose M, which talks about encouraging the coordination of various public and private procedures and shaping land development to the more efficient use of lands. In terms of the negative criteria, I do not believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good by granting the variances that we've requested. As I've stated, they're similar lot sizes and there are definitely similar house sizes in the area, which which was actually the intent of the R1A zone for larger houses. And these houses are not larger, with the exception of one. In terms of no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, I looked at your master plan, and I do believe we promote a few of the objectives and goals contained in that plan. Under land use, I think that we promote the continued efforts to stabilize and upgrade residential neighborhoods. Acknowledge distinct characteristics of residential neighborhoods through design standards. Again, you'll see that in our rendering that's coming up shortly. The scale of new development should be consistent with the neighborhood. I believe that our proposed development is going to be in scale with the neighborhood for the reasons that I stated that we were going to be in conformance with the majority of the house sizes on that side of the, excuse me, of the street. And also under the land use plan, under recommendations, provide design guidelines to promote the development of high-quality and compatible one and two-family housing residential uses. Again, I believe they're providing high-quality housing, but I can't wait till the architecture shows up on your screen. So with that said, I do believe that we meet both the positive and the negative criteria. I do not believe there's any substantial detriment to the subdivision of the slot for the reasons that I stated throughout my testimony. And we would hope that the board would see fit to grant the variances and subdivision this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
If if you could, please just leave that. I don't know if we want that exhibit. But we're talking about the R1A is exactly where on that map. Is it from lot 23 to lot 27?
That is correct. Right, right there, right there.
Okay, so we're, you know, I have trouble comparing the the properties in the R1 to the R1A. I think that's exactly what the R1A is intended to do is keep those bigger properties and, you know, looking.
The intent was for larger lots, excuse me, larger house sizes, and the houses aren't larger. The majority of them are actually built on the left side of the lot. It almost looks like, with the exception of the one that's only 37 and a half feet, it looks like all of them want to actually be subdivided because they're all built on the left side of the lot.
But isn't that, you know, isn't that made to accommodate a driveway to the, you know, an old carriage house, an old-timey carriage house in the back of the lot?
Chairman, if I could just quickly come in here, I I know that spot zoning is certainly a dirty word and we don't, we don't want to do that. But the fact of the matter is, is that this is a wider lot as been shown by Ms. Gregory that actually has available on-street horizontal parking. So I think the argument that we're advancing today is that maybe the while the zoning at the time might have been appropriate, it might not necessarily be appropriate for this particular property and these particular parcels. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to bring this property into conformance with a lot of the R1 that's surrounding it. And unfortunately, this is not a situation where we could have gone to the zoning board and asked for a a D variance and argued that we felt that the the you, excuse me, the use here was more appropriate. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to bring this particular lot, what we think is into more conformance with the lots that are surrounding it right now.
Well, it's and and I understand your argument. It it's currently conforming with the zone that it's in. And the surrounding properties, it's not on the edge of the R1A. It's, you know, it's not in the middle, but it's close to the middle. It's it's got R1A on either side of it, so. I don't know. I I don't know that, you know, we can, you can make that case here, but, you know, that's that's the testimony that's in front of us, so.
We're certainly trying to make that case.
I understand.
I think maybe the best thing to do at this point would actually, to bring up our architect and show what we're proposing, to show how we feel that actually fits in with what the current housing on the block.
I I think we're going to have my other commissioners chime in if they.
I will, this is Commissioner Torres. I would like I'm around this one or two. I agree with the chair president. This is a R1A and the houses on that side are similar to the, you know, the the similar sizes, maybe not the size of the house, but I you failed to bring up the historic look of the house, too. You talk about, you know, the houses next to each other, but that house right there has a on the, if you're looking at the property on the right-hand side of the property, which could have been for a carriage house or something else at one time, it is a big wide driveway that we will call a driveway now, lot next to it. The house itself has a historic windows view to it, so. When you talk about, I need one question, a question answered. When you talk about the size space of the house, the space between the existing property and the new property is going to be about how wide?
It's going to be enough to to be able to accommodate the existing structure and the lot, the the house itself would be able to be accommodated on a 25 by 125 lot, which is what we're proposing.
Oh, then on the right-hand side of the property that you want to accommodate, it's going to be one foot eight only?
So I think.
It's matching the houses along the street.
I think that's why it would be helpful to actually have a visual of what we're proposing to show that.
I don't think, having a visual of what you guys want to propose is the question that we we have now. We have a property that's confronted with one, two, three, four, five other properties on that R1A that they are the same. They're basically a bigger lot. And that home that we are looking at, I walk my dog in front of that house every day, twice a day. And it's a beautiful Victorian home that we want to make it look like the other homes across the street, which are completely different, different property. We're taking away the historic beauty of that block.
We're we're actually not, the the building itself is still going to be of the historic architecture. That doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the variances. We're actually enhancing the architectural nature of the house itself. And I do think that I really wish that the architect went first. You would have seen actually the house that we're proposing that is actually going to look better than the houses that are located.
That's the problem with the subdivisions. They want to show us these houses that that might come in later on that are not really part of what I am going to be voting on right now. What I'm going to be voting on right now is whether I'm going to have a subdivision of this property, which is the same as the other five properties, just because the architect has designed for something alongside of it. At this point right now, it's not what's at question. What's at question is, do we split this property up? And there's five other properties that have houses and there's two of them, if I'm not mistaken. There's another one, two houses now, that is just as Victorian-looking and pretty as that house is. Yes, it might need some work. Front fence might need to be fixed, but it's 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 a beautiful house. We're going to cut cut of it and squeeze another one right into the middle of it. I I'm not understanding the space. Okay, what is the historic value of that house? The historic, say anything about buildings, something so close to it?
Commissioner Torres, the only thing that we we were able to ascertain from from historic is is that the house does have historic value, that it cannot be torn down, and that's not the plan this evening. We don't plan on touching the historic building. The only thing that we are proposing this evening is to split the lot up and hopefully build a very nice house next to it.
So the lot has nothing to do with the, the size of the lot has nothing to do with the historic value of the property itself.
That that's correct. We we would not be able to demolish, touch, change anything to that Victorian home. It it would require us to go in front of the Historic Commission. So what we're what we're asking for this evening is to do nothing other than maintain that existing home and and to build something next to it.
And Tom, what does that do in terms of setbacks to that structure and the new lot created? Aren't you maybe?
The idea would obviously be to comply with the requirements of both the R1A and probably even more so the R1, because we'd be building on an R1-type lot. And if there was any other variances that would be required for that home, we'd have to actually go in front of the zoning board and ask that they approve it.
Well, but aren't you potentially asking us to subdivide a lot and create setbacks that are non-conforming?
I would say that one of the things that we're asking for and one of the things that we noticed for is that the existing home will need a side yard setback as part of this subdivision to accommodate the existing portion of the building that runs up against the new lot line we're proposing.
And do we have a site plan that shows that subdivision and what that's going to look like?
Part of the subdivision that was provided did show where the existing structure is and where that would run up against the lot line.
Are you able to put that on the screen?
Unfortunately, I believe that my surveyor got called away to another hearing this evening. I was supposed to have him this night, but I don't believe that he is available.
Well, I I'm trying to remember which one it is, but I think I could put it up on the screen if I figure out which document it is.
I have it. I could put it on the screen.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, so I'll stop sharing.
I do want to caution counsel. You know, we're talking about bringing a lot into conformance in the R1 zone, but this this lot, even if subdivided, is still going to sit in the R1A zone.
That's correct.
So I I just, I want to, you know, make the board aware that talking about bringing it into conformance with R1 doesn't mean that we're removing it from the R1A. It'll still be in the R1A zone and not.
That's correct, and I'm not making a representation otherwise.
Okay, I I just, yeah, I just want to make sure the board is clear on, you know, what's what's happening with the the actual zone.
Chris, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So subdividing, I'm I'm looking at dual map on the property as well. And when you when you subdivide that, it's such a beautiful historic property and subdividing it. And subdividing it, taking away that driveway completely.
Also, Commissioner, not to completely interrupt, but that's why I want the survey up on the screen, right? I want to see what it is that's being proposed. I think the board wants to see that.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, counsel.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah, one second, Tim. Nvidia, if we're talking about the Google map image, we are gonna have to screenshot it somehow and put it into.
Unless, and by the way, unless we can share the screens, you know, we really shouldn't be looking at anything outside of what's on the screen. And maybe counsel wants to use that to cause here. Maybe he doesn't.
Well, this is on the open data point.
You know, if I may, it's one of the same.
I'm not talking about the survey. I'm talking about anything outside of what's been provided this evening. I know why Mr. Lean didn't put the survey up. It's because Mr. Kessler's not here to testify as to the survey. So he elected to leave it off, and he's doing the best he can. I appreciate the effort.
And 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 counsel, I I do believe that commissioners are allowed to testify from their personal knowledge. So if somebody has viewed a map or if they've walked by the property, they're allowed to make those representations in front of the board.
Correct.
Yes. So unfortunately, I do not have Mr. Kessler in front of me, but what you are looking at is the subdivision that was submitted to everybody that is part of the the public record. And I I I think you will see under the after that the existing property is able to be accommodated on the the site that that we're proposing.
Can you please zoom in into it so that we can have a clearer picture of it?
Vidya, do you want to ask any specific question about what we're looking at?
My question is on the setback, having a driveway and the taking away the historic value on that property where by eliminating that driveway. Parking is another issue as well there.
We understand concern about, you understand that concern in the R1. Were these properties to be subdivided? They actually would not be required to have parking. And we think that because again of the wide nature of the road and because there is horizontal parking there, we think that there's adequate parking on the street. This is really about trying to continue what we believe really should be it should be an R1 type of structure as far as the houses that are built in this area.
That's that's the part, the houses that are built in that area, that's across the street, is a R1 structures. On the block from Garfield Avenue going towards Princeton Avenue is a R1 structure. But from these five lots, they're not R1 structures. So we are gonna so they they are not R1 structures. They are R1A structures. They are oversized lots. And it's just not one oversized lot on that section that's surrounded by other R1 structures. It's five of them in a row, all the way to the corner.
Understood.
And I'll you know, once again, I'll I'll clear it up for the board that we're not taking this out of R1A. This will continue to be an R1A. So you know, any reference to wanting this to look like it's in R1, that's the testimony, but the lot will continue to be an R1A.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would offer this and and counsel. I think this is what the board is asking. You're in the R1 zone. What are the requirements? It looks like we're creating a lot with the existing structure that has a less than one foot setback on the north side. Looks like less than half a foot on the south side. Obviously, we're removing that driveway because the new structure is going to go supposedly where that driveway is. A front yard setback remains at 19, but you're supposed to have five and 10 side yards on the right existing house.
If this, if these were to be treated as connected houses, it would have to be a little less than that. If they were unconnected houses, it would be a, it would be what you described. Yes.
But they are unconnected.
They they would be unconnected. Yes, but there is the possibility in the R1 that you would have a connected home. Yes. And I know that we're not in the R1, but we are arguing that we feel it's more conforming for these lots to be created and and be treated as our one home lots.
Okay, if if nobody else has any questions, let's um, let's move on.
Okay. The only other witness that I would offer tonight would be my architect, Alan Feld, and it would be very brief just to show you what we would propose on this lot.
Alan, let me just swear you in, okay? And just unmute your mic.
Is that good?
Yep. Do you swear any testimony you're gonna give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Alan Feld. A O N F E L D. Mr. Feld, good evening. We've qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current tonight? Yes, it is. Okay, thank you. And before you bring up your your item, let's mark it. Let's describe what it is. It's not in the packet that we have.
No.
So we're up to A5 currently. This will be A5.
Yes, Mr. Feld, if you could just share your screen and show the 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 pro proposed rendering that you and I have in the past viewed.
Well, let's see if I can make that happen. The magic happened. See, I've never done this before. Let me see. I've never shared before. I don't know.
Tim, if Mr. Feld is unable to get this, I believe I have shared this with you in the past, though I don't believe that you put it on the portal.
Yeah, give me a second. I think I can find it.
I'm trying. Tell you what, guys. It's 7:37 right now. Do we maybe want to take a break? Mike, we usually try and get you a break around now.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, why don't we take a break right now?
And we'll see if we can work this out.
Yeah, we'll take five minutes. We'll come back on it. It's now 7:38. We'll come back on it 7:43. And hopefully we can get this working.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Five minutes, everybody.
Tom, I got it. So I can show it if necessary.
Okay, all right. Well, when we come back, I would appreciate.
Yeah, thank you very much. How'd you do that? Okay, could we come to order again, everybody? And I do see a number of hands raised. Don't worry, we're gonna open a public comment in a hopefully a few minutes. And we'll allow everybody to speak. So, okay, so Tim found the. I I think I got mine to work. I think I gotta try it. There we go. Is that working? Yes. Yeah, we do have it. Okay, if you could just describe what this is, this once again is going to be A5. So, yeah, this is a rendering of the proposed new structure that we built on the vacant, the new lot. As you can see, it's a three-story structure. Front steps to an open porch. There'll be one unit on the second floor and another unit on the third floor. We've tried to incorporate some of the architectural characteristics on the block. A large cornice on top, trim windows, a hardy plank siding, a decorative balcony with fencing. And these will be garage doors for the for the garage.
And Mr. Feld, with this building as proposed, would it comply with the requirements of the R1A or would we have to go before the zoning board and ask for variances to construct this building?
This would be, this would comply with the requirements for the R1 zones as far as setbacks.
But seeing as that we're in the R1A, the zoning board would still have to approve a project similar to this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And in in this, can you see this slide?
We can.
Yeah, okay. So you see, we match the height of the, this is the existing building to the left. And to the right is the existing building. And we match the height and it's very sympathetic to the character of the historic building that's to remain.
Thank you, Mr. Feld.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feld. Once again, for the board's information, we're not voting tonight on a sub or I'm sorry, on a site plan. We're strictly voting on the subdivision.
And and Chairman, as I I made clear with my question, any any building that we proposed on this lot most likely would have to get approved from the the zoning board because variances would be included.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so we can't ask any questions about this because we're not even looking at.
Yeah, we're not talking about a
Okay.
You know, a site plan right now. So I I would suggest you know, unless you have a burning question that you need answered.
I just don't understand why the rendering doesn't look like the the house that's existing historic. The rendering of the house that looks more historic than the one that is historic. You're gonna put the same designs on windows. It looks nothing like that.
I would.
Victorian value that I don't make this.
Yeah, I would suggest that the questions.
Yes, yes, you're correct.
Well, Chairman, I would suggest counsel, you may not agree with this, but I would suggest that if we're going to be considering a subdivision that's going to then require variances on the lot that we're creating because it's now undersized. I think that is appropriate for this body because obviously you're asking for a variance to create an undersized lot and then with a undersized or non-conforming structure on that undersized lot. I think it's appropriate for the body to consider that. Naturally, you could have proposed this to this body at the time you did the subdivision. And you're not for. Whatever reason, I'm not really clear on that if.
Uh, the, the idea Council is that this body probably wouldn't have jurisdiction to hear it because any new house that was built on that lot would not meet the criteria for a minor subdivision, would be under 5,000 square feet and therefore this board actually probably couldn't hear it. So it actually have to go before the zoning board of adjustment to approve any, any structure on this property that would just need C variances.
Except you're creating these other variances on the remainder lot.
That is what we are requesting this evening, yes. And those variances are accompanying a subdivision which can be heard by this board.
Right. So. Chairman and Board, I, I, I think Council's being straight with us, right? And I don't want to imply that he's not being straight with us, but. Yeah, there are then going to be variances necessary to construct the structure on the remainder lot that would wind up being undersized, so. I think we've heard the testimony, I think everybody understands the testimony. And. Chairman. I throw it back to Council and anything else he wants to present, then we can open the public and.
I have, I have no other further testimony this evening. I believe that the bulk of our testimony really relied on what was. Said by our planner and, and I would request that the board grant the requested variances in the subdivision.
Okay, thank you, Council. All right, so at this time, we'll open it up for a public comment, I see a number of hands raised.
I'm gonna promote Natalie.
And just for everybody out there, if you're calling in, you can press star nine if you'd like to raise your hand.
Natalie, you can come off mute and if you can turn on your video.
I'm, I'm trying, you have to realize I'm 73 years old, I'm trying.
Not a problem. You're doing great already if I can hear you.
I, I, you can hear me, but I lost my picture, I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't worry about it, I just want to swear you in, okay?
Okay.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Oh, I do.
And if you could, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Natalie Cook, N-A-T-H-A-L-I-E, last name Cook, C-O-O-K.
Ms. Cook, good evening, we have five minutes for you.
Okay. I am in my house right now on Garfield Avenue, just around the corner from the property. I have lived in this house since 1961, I've been here for 59 years. I want to know how long Ms. Gregory and Mr. Lean have lived in this neighborhood that they seem to know so much about it. I'm part of the Neighborhood Association. We are. Very much against this project. We went around and got a petition, we met a lot of our neighbors that we didn't know that have since joined our association because they're against this project. This is a beautiful house in the neighborhood. That had a beautiful wraparound porch in January of this year, but in February of this year, the wraparound porch was gone. Somebody took it off in the middle of the night, it's no longer there, I wonder who did that. So when I hear these things about the fact that they're not going to. Touch the historic house, they're not going to do anything to it. I wonder how true that is since they've already done something to the house. And the parking, they said parking is not a problem. I'm 73 years old, if I'm not home from work by seven o'clock, I have to park down on Princeton Avenue or Linden Avenue, I have to ride around until I can find a parking space. Because there is no parking on Garfield Avenue or Pierceall Avenue. The street might be wide, but there are a lot of cars in this neighborhood and if you lived in this neighborhood, you would know that. There's just so much I want to say, but I get all excited and worked up, I'm also Italian and my blood starts to boil. And my blood has been boiling through this whole conversation, through this whole hearing, listening to the things that have been said by people that know nothing about this neighborhood. We have lived here, we, most of us are old timers that have been here for a long, long time. And we all know that what we heard tonight. It just doesn't pertain to our neighborhood. And I want to know, you know, are they looking to build these houses because they want to move into our neighborhood? Or are they building these houses because they want to come into our neighborhood and see how they can make money from our neighborhood and then go back to their lives wherever they live out of Jersey City? They don't have to deal with the problems they leave behind, they only have to deal with the money they make from changing our neighborhood. I'm sure my five minutes are up and I thank you very much for your time and. I hope you, I hope you have compassion for us in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, and for the record, my wife is three quarters Sicilian and a quarter Galbrais, so.
Ah, so then you understand how I am.
Where you're coming from. Okay, thank you, uh, okay, let's bring somebody else up.
Hey, I just promoted Barbara.
Hi Barbara, I just want to swear you in, okay? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Barbara Camacho, B-A-R-B-A-R-A-C-A-M-A-C-H-O.
Ms. Camacho, thank you for coming in, uh, we have five minutes for you.
Okay, great. I am a longtime resident of Ward A and I live in R1A. I'm one of those five properties. That are zoned because they're larger lots. In listening to Ms. Gregory describe why she believes that this application meets the standard, she indicated that she thinks the project meets the intent and purpose of the statute, the, the. It's pretty clear, I'm looking at R1 amendments and the language doesn't reference the square footage of feet of, of, of housing. This is a direct quote in describing the need for an R1A zone in areas where there do have, where, where larger lots exist like Greenville and like West Side. The primary exception is Greenville, which has larger lot sizes, larger lots with a total area of 3,000 square feet and more and West Side, which have lots up to 5,000 square feet in size. It was interesting to hear the justification for taking the only home that's in the center of a five-unit zoning unit, zoning area and turning it into, as Council repeatedly referred to it, as an R1 property. The reason why there was this R1A zone created was because community members and the leadership of Jersey City thought it was important to preserve the diversity of our streetscape. The applicant did a really good job of describing and showing you pictures of how uniform the top of the block is where we have a lot of smaller lots. That's the reason why the R1A was there, because we wanted to prevent it from looking like Cheek and Joel, like every house looking exactly the same. Having preserved these five lots because they were larger than those around them was the entire point. And I saw a lot of focus on the R1 section of the neighborhood and no focus on the five homes that make up the R1A, other than to say that. She would improve the look of the home. We work really hard to have these homes and we're very proud of our homes. They're not great and not all of us have historic homes by, by any stretch of the imagination, but that's where we call home. And it was insulting to hear that, at least in the view of the applicant supporting staff, that some of our homes weren't up to her standard. The idea. That we have no parking issues in Ward A is being flouted because she visited our neighborhood in May is outrageous. I'm not directly impacted by parking, but it hasn't been rare that I allow a neighbor to park in my lot because there are no parking spots available. This has been a problem forever and it only continues to get worse. I want to point out that. Having the R1A in that area. Creates the diversity that we're all trying to maintain, you can sense a difference when you walk from Garfield toward Pierceall. The landscape is different, the structures make it feel different, it looks bigger, it looks softer. There's an appeal there, we chose our houses intentionally. We're not the only R1A unit zone, there's smaller zones than the five homes. There's actually a zone in Ward B on Kensington that consists of four units. There's a purpose to that, it's to preserve without having to market or make it a historic district which will invariably price most of minorities out, me included. But still give us the ability to have something that's beautiful, I'd like to point out just for historical context that the largest lot in that R1A zone belongs to the first African-American family to diversify this neighborhood. They still live there. The people of this neighborhood have been here forever, I've been here for almost 20 years and I'm a rookie here. The idea. That Council or an applicant would create an application that they deemed as unique. And bring it before this board. Is astonishing, it's astonishing because the amount of. Variances that would have to be given, the amount of exceptions that would have to be afforded. Far outweigh any benefit that the community would gain. The community in fact gains nothing, this would be detrimental to this community. In large part because right now. That beautiful Victorian home had a swath of greenery. Next to the parking lot, that's gone, if you put up a house in what amounts to be a parking lot, that's all gone. They're talking about a setback. That's R1, which is a lot smaller than the setback for an R1A. So already you're changing the dynamic of the neighborhood and frankly, if you change the one house that's in the middle of the R1A zone, you've destroyed the R1A zone, because you know what? There's four other people with the ability to subdivide those properties and why wouldn't they?
Ms. Camacho, that's your five minutes.
Okay, thank you for, for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, let's bring up the next person, please.
Okay, I promoted CJ Allen.
CJ Allen, you can unmute.
There we go.
Are you able to turn your video on? I just want to swear you in before you get started, okay? Do you swear any testimony you're going to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Curtis Allen, C-U-R-T-I-S-A-L-L-E-N.
Mr. Allen, good evening, we have five minutes for you.
Good evening and thank you for your time. One of the things I'd like to pick up on is the earlier, one of the applicants was stating that they wouldn't touch the structure because of its historical value. And that's simply not true. They intentionally removed part of a wraparound porch that basically extended from the front of the house all the way around the, that would be the west side of the house, or rather the east side of the house. And the only reason why they can even attempt to subdivide the slot now is because of removal of that porch. The porch would have extended at least four feet, which would have made that structure that they're currently trying to build impossible to build because it would have been way too narrow. And so to me, it seems as if they intentionally. Removed the porch so that they could then. Go ahead and apply for the subdivision of the lot. And there are a couple of other things that have been misstated, I believe it was by the attorneys, last name was Lean or Leanne, I believe. If I got it wrong, I'm sorry. And he said that the houses across the street, which is where myself and my partner live, are basically 16 by 100-foot lots and that's also inaccurate. The minimum sized lots over here would be like our house, which is part of a three structure row house, is 17 feet. The lots are 125 feet long minimum and that goes all up and down the block. The other misstatement was in regards to parking. You pointed out that there's parallel, you said there was no parallel parking, but that it was all head-on parking. And that's only true for part of the block, the other side of the block is parallel parking. It is a wide street, but once cars are parked on either side, it's a very narrow street. And what they're trying to do now in removing that driveway so they can put in this other structure, completely creates an even larger crisis for the parking, as one of the other neighborhood members mentioned. Because after seven o'clock, you cannot park here, so they're looking to take a perfectly usable driveway that could easily fit four cars and put up a house that they're still going to have to get variances for. This adds nothing to the neighborhood, this is only adding to the developers who, as they said. We live in houses that they're not up to their standards or they're ugly and that's simply not true. We live at 25 Pierceall, come and look at our house, our house is gorgeous, the houses across the street are absolutely gorgeous. We have tree lines, we planted a tree, we put in a planter because we care about the look of the neighborhood. My partner and I looked for many years before we settled on this house for the reasons of the neighborhood and the neighbors that have been here forever. Adding this subdivision does nothing to help the community, it does nothing to help the block, it only would help the developers and it's also interesting, looking at the cornices of the rent of the, the drawing for the proposed structure, it looks like you copied our cornices, we just had our cornices redone and it's, you pretty much copied our cornices. So clearly the houses aren't as ugly as we'd like to represent. We're against this subdivision. Our neighbors are against the subdivision, the R1A zone was created to prevent these types of subdivisions. And so we're asking the commissioners to please vote against this because we don't see any value that it would create for that lot or for this block or for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, we appreciate it. And is that an original painting back there?
Yes, it is.
That's beautiful.
Very nice, yeah.
Okay, let's bring up the next, next member of public.
So I promoted Joanne.
Okay.
Hi Joanne, are you able to turn your video on?
Um, I think, yeah, here we go.
All right, great, I see you, I just want to swear you in, okay?
Sure.
You raise your right hand? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Sure, Joanne, J-O-A-N-N-E, Gorman, G-O-R-M-A-N.
Ms. Gorman, good evening, we have five minutes for you.
Oh, sure, um, I don't, I don't know that I can add much more to what has already been said, I agree with all the points made by my neighbors, um, I care deeply about the, the neighborhood we live in, I've been here for 62 years. I don't think that the proposed project is going to add to the neighborhood. I mean, the, the structure, it, it just, it, it crowds us even more. The, the beauty of that whole section of the block is that there is, it is spacious and, and it allows the homes there to. To really flourish with, you know, greenery and, and, you know, a nice decor, so I, I would prefer to see it remain that way. I really, you know, I'm concerned now that the homes on either side of this structure are going to be really crowded, the, the person who lives. I guess to the east of that will have, um, like no land, no, no sunlight, nothing, it'll, it'll, and that's a, that's a gardener that lives in that home, so I don't want to see that become a problem for her. And again, I, I have to reiterate, parking is a nightmare. Um, I want to give credit to our councilwoman Denise Ridley, went out of her way to. Alter the, the, the parking structures or the, the parking paradigm, I should say, in the neighborhood. Um, a lot of the blocks now have angle parking, something we had asked for, for years. And, um, in the last couple of years, she's made a real effort to, uh, bring that into the neighborhood. But even that doesn't prevent you from driving around sometimes for a half hour to find some, some parking if you're, if you're coming home late. You know, to add to the, the density of the neighborhood is, is not going to be doing any favors for any of us. So basically, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman, we appreciate it.
No worries, have a.
You too.
All right, that was a little fast, I promoted.
Hi Chris.
Hey, everybody, how are you doing?
Let me just swear you in.
Yep.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
Chris Perez, C-H-R-A-S-P-E-R-E-Z.
Chris, good evening, we have five minutes for you, you know the drill.
Yeah, I know the drill, um, so I'm speaking to you today, not just as a community advocate on the south side, but also as a trustee of the Jersey City Landmarks Conservancy. um but also as a trustee of the Jersey City Landmarks Conservancy. Um, particularly because this is a historic house and a lot of the subject matter tonight is about um historic conversation. There's been a lot of talk about um the way the house looks and sort of how that happened, the existing house has been preserved. Um, but one of the most important uh factors in terms of uh historic preservation is setting. And the way that this house is set on the lot is very important to its historicness. As some of you have mentioned, um, the driveway, the carriage house, the space in between, those are all very significant components to the historic nature of the property. So by subdividing it and putting another, squeezing another home in there, you're actually detracting from that. Um, I drive by this house quite frequently myself, um and I did witness the porch uh disappearing in February of this past year. Um, and we're exploring what um remedies can be made for that. Uh, that porch extended twenty-seven feet wide, so it would encroach on the theoretical subdivision. And I too, I also do speculate that it was removed um to make this subdivision more uh possible. Um, that side porch was an integral part of the historicness of the house. Like I said, setting the way it's situated on the lot, very important stuff. Um, the other thing I want to mention is that um this R one A zone is sporadic through the south side of Jersey City and also um west side near Lincoln Park. I'm also very familiar with the R one A R one F zone, which is very similar to this, which is around where I live as well. Um, and the intent of this zone um is to create a sort of historic preservation um in areas that are not as um affluent. Um, it is sort of a way to create some protection without financially hurting people too much. Um, we've explored thinking about historic zones in various parts of the south side, and we know they could be very painful to residents, so we don't have them. But this is the next best thing. This subdivision completely goes against the core of what this R one A zoning is about. Um, and I'd also like to add that the R one A zoning requires one parking space per unit. So you will also be, by subdividing this, now the existing home will not be in compliance with that. Um, in terms of the side yard setbacks, um, the house on the other side has a setback which accommodates that sort of light and air and the feeling of the streetscape. So even though the current structure is close to the property line, it's irrelevant because the next property next door is also required to have a setback, which gives that sort of cadence and spacing in between the properties. Um, so these are all very important things. It's not just about how the property looks, but it's also about its setting on the lot. Um, its setbacks, all of that is part of the historical nature of the property, and that's really important um to point out. Lastly, I'd like to say that if this was approved tonight, um it would set a very dangerous precedent um on these R one A and R one F zones that are scattered throughout the south side and and other parts of the city. Exactly what this subdivision is asking for is exactly why this zone was created, to prevent that. And if you were to approve that, you're really going against the core of what the zoning is for. It's, we're not, we're not uh challenging a certain component of this zoning. This is the core of what the zoning is about. It's to not subdivide. It's to preserve these larger lot sizes. It's to preserve the historic character and that feeling. Um, so I ask that you do not approve this today. And um that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Promoted Gordon.
Gordon, you can unmute.
Can't believe how fast you type, Mike.
Gordon, you have been promoted. You can speak now.
I I have no desire to speak on this application. Um, I must have been a mistake. I apologize.
Thank you. I'm going to promote John Keen.
Hi, John.
Hi, sorry. Yes, I'm sorry about that. My um system uh rebooted a little bit.
Let me just swear you in before you get going, okay?
Okay.
Do you raise your red hand?
Yeah.
You swear any testimony you give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, so oh my god.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My name is John Keen, J O H N K E E N E.
Mr. Keen, good evening. Uh, we have five minutes for you.
Yes, I'm, I just have uh two things to say. The first is, I just want to speak to the uh historical nature of the house and uh the existing house and its beauty. Um, and I'm not sure if anyone mentioned this uh in in their testimony, but this house actually uh is such a standout uh property that it was used in a Hollywood film. Uh, I think of The Honeymooners starring Cedric the Entertainer and and other stars. Um, you know, we we don't have uh lots of homes like this uh in this area. And of course, uh as Mr. Perez said, uh, you know, it's not just the home itself, but the entire setting that would change if this uh this subdivision uh uh was then allowed to uh have a property on it. So I just wanted to make that a comment. The second comment I just wanted to stress is this, the question of parking. Um, as several people have uh stated, we are in a kind of parking crisis right now. Um, and uh when there, there's any kind of work that's being done on the street, for example, like Pierce Hall right now, there's work that's being done uh with the sewer pipes. Um, we lose, lose pretty much parking on that, on on this uh street. And so then all the other streets become sites where people have to kind of hunt for parking. Um, and you know, when you think of elderly neighbors, when you think of uh neighbors who may have disabilities, when you think of neighbors who have, may have small children, uh you you just many, many uh uh reasons why people, you know, uh really are disadvantaged when we lose parking. Uh, and when you lose a key space like this, um particularly not just a space, but then of course also you lose an entire parking lot. Uh, I'm sorry, your parking area to a a sizable house, it it really disadvantages the neighborhood. So I just wanted to stress that. The the question of parking and also the beauty of that house and its setting. And I mean, it it was such that, you know, a Hollywood crew scouting the neighborhood said, we want to film here. And of course, when the movie came out, one of the things that people lived in the neighborhood were able to say is, oh my god, you know, we know that house is a historic house. Which unfortunately, as several people have mentioned, uh was damaged uh by uh the owners or whoever. Uh, when in February, when they removed part of that wraparound uh porch that extended into uh the, what is now this subdivided lot.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And I've never seen the Honeymooners reboot movie. I can't believe it. I'll have to watch it now.
Oh, yes, please do. It's a nice tribute to Jersey City.
I love it. I love it. Okay, um, I don't see any other hands raised. Anybody else want to comment on this?
Mr. Chair, saying no more public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public's closed. Uh, Tim, do you have anything you want to add? Do you want to wrap up?
Yes, um, just so the board knows, um, while many members of the public made uh assertions that the uh porch that would have been in conflict with the subdivision was removed at a certain point. I've done extensive research to it. I cannot ask the exact timing of when the porch was removed. I did um ask Mr. Lean if it was removed when uh uh prior to the applicant, uh, prior, he said to his knowledge, no. Um, but that being said, that's regardless of what my main concern is, um, it would have a major issue with um the subdivision as it stands because a porch would have stood in front of allowing for such a subdivision. Uh, if you see my staff report on November sixteenth, twenty, I'm just gonna read one line from my report or one little paragraph. Um, it speaks to the negative criteria of granting this application or granting the subdivision in general. The proposed lot to be subdivided, as well as the lots adjacent to this lot, are also zoned as R one A. The subdividing of this lot and granting of variance is associated with the relief of the restrictions of the R one A zone. Now, mind you, while still being part of the R one A zone, uh after the subdivision is complete, would be to allow, would be to the uh adjacent neighbors detriment and stated purpose of the R one A zoning district. One of the basic intents of this zone is to allow for larger lots that were already accommodating either larger homes or typical two-family homes with full driveways with detached garages. In addition, this home was deemed historically significant enough for historic preservation to deny demolition. Overall, saying that, I feel that if the board moves forward and votes on this application, take into consideration that R one A zones are specifically intended
Right.
to keep a larger lot size, not just a larger home size, to also preserve driveways and the look in general of those lots. And that this lot is not on a edge of an R one A zone. It is in the center of an R one A zone. It has historic significance. And by allowing this subdivision to occur, it puts many other R one A zones and even R one F zones in in peril in the future because this sets precedent. Setting precedent is very uh dangerous in certain situations and uh it is a true uh detriment that needs to be adhered to uh when you make your decisions uh on voting. So that being said, uh, that's my comments.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Mr. Chair, uh, at this time.
Orlando, hold on one second. I do see uh Mr. Allen's hand up. Uh, I'm sorry, I apologize. You're only allowed to speak once per applicant.
We're good?
We're good.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna make a motion to not approve uh case two zero dash zero three nine again. That's a motion to not approve.
So Doctor, that's a motion to deny.
A motion to deny, that's correct.
Second.
AKA.
Okay. We have a motion for denial and a second.
Him, before you call the roll, a yes vote is to deny. And let's just make sure Chairman, Commissioner Cruz is still on.
Uh, Commissioner Cruz is not voting on this. He uh we didn't announce that he was back on and uh Tim, just on FYI, the roll call starts with um Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Oh. Um, okay, uh Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Um, I'm gonna vote yes to deny. I I don't think uh that we um hearing, even before I heard from the, from the public. Um, the case was just not made. It was not made to uh make this change. Uh, in my eyes, it just was, it was not made. And to subdivide um this existing lot would would give us a really bad precedent. Uh, I am going to go ahead and say yes to deny.
Commissioner Torres.
Listening to the public and I'm glad they got on the phone. Um, made me turn around and look at my wife and realized that porch has been gone, the lap around porch. Um, that was the house we always talked about when we walked by it because of the lap around porch. And it is recently, February sounds about right. What Perez said is true. It's not the building itself that is historic, it's the property allowed. It's the look of the block. That's what's historic there, um, in my view. And I'm wondering if, let's say, this went through, will we ever consider taking the Apple Tree House as subdivided at the other house next to it? I wonder. And with that, I vote yes to deny this project.
Commissioner Gangdon.
I want to thank the community for coming out this evening and voicing their concerns, particular Garwin um Neighborhood Block Association. Uh, thank you guys for coming out. Um, taking away the historic beauty of this neighborhood, it would be truly, truly detrimental. And so I like the recommendation of our principal planner at the same time, and my vote is yes to deny.
Commissioner Horton.
I'm voting yes to deny. And again, thank you to all the community who came out and spoke about this.
Commissioner Cor.
Thanking the community to come in, come out and waste the opinion, I vote yes to deny.
Commissioner Allen.
Um, I I'm with everybody else, including the community. Thank you for coming out, expressing your feelings. Um, I'm a eye on this. Yes to deny.
Doctor Desai.
Yeah, the committee was in full force, you know, and I would like a picture of that porch, you know, before February, if we can get it. Maybe next time how it was. Uh, so the committee was really there to help us out and uh decide, you know, I will vote yes to deny.
Council President Waterman.
Um, I want to thank the community for coming out and um I'm voting yes to deny because what we must realize too, there's a uniqueness about Jersey City as you go throughout the city. And certain wards has a certain character. And I think we need to start standing up and make sure that we um respect the zoning that was put in place, even many of us got, got here because they wanted a certain character in a neighborhood. And so I'm glad that we are voting yes to deny because we don't want to set a precedent that people who have large lots can cut them down now to box houses. Because I know I'm going a lot of places and I'm seeing a lot of box houses. And so uh, thank you, community, for coming out and expressing your feelings.
Chairman Langston.
Um, yeah, I think Ms. Cook said it best um when she, she talked about you know, walking the neighborhood and and getting people to sign petitions and, you know, meeting all the new neighbors. Nothing brings a neighborhood together more than something like this. A- as, you know, as we were hearing testimony before, um, Ms. Gregory read the the definition of the R one A zone. And it's, it's specifically, I felt we're specifically talking about this property. This is the reason that R one A exists. So, um, I I'd like to vote. I I'd like to vote yes to deny, but I'd like to call it, you know, no way. So, uh, i- it's a yes to deny. And and thank you, everybody, for coming out.
All in favor, uh, motion passes to deny the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Like to thank the board for their time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to.
Uh, Chris, did you want to do the extensions?
Yes, um, I apologize. We have two small applications that somehow ended up on the end of the agenda. Uh, there, uh, we have a one-year extension and a two-year extension. I I would like to move those up. They should be brief. Um, I'd like to urge the council for both of those to be brief. Uh, but let's move on um to item twenty-seven on the agenda. Is uh case P two zero dash one four seven uh for a minor subdivision with C variance, one-year extension. And the address there is one seventy-five to one eighty-five Academy Street. Mr. Harrington, I apologize. We had a, put a fire out before the meeting started tonight and uh I I totally forgot about moving you up front.
No problem. I appreciate you moving me up uh to this point. And I will uh be quick. I promise to be quick. I did provide notices in connection with this uh extension. I asked that they be reviewed and marked.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. I've had the opportunity to review them. All appears to be in order, so we can mark those as one.
Okay, so uh, real quick, this subdivision was approved by this board last March. It was a minor subdivision to create two development lots uh for due, two separate uh developers. Uh, it is, uh, was, uh, was proposed in connection with a closing uh which we were prepared to close at the end of October. The subdivision approval um ran until November fourth. So we had all our ducks in a row, but uh the long and short of it is the title company was concerned that if we close at the end of October, that the Hudson County Register was not going to record them in time because of COVID issues. So we took a step back. Uh, they asked us to request this extension so that Uh, everything is, is neat and in order for our closing. So we expect to close within, you know, the next thirty days. Uh, in the event that this extension is, is, um, uh, approved. And that is, that's really the, that's it. We were ready to do it, but COVID kind of got in the way.
Yeah, yeah, gotten away with a lot of things.
So, Mr. Harrington, the subdivision was not perfected? Is that?
That, that's correct. That's why we had the, the deeds were signed, uh, prepared and signed by the planning board chairman and secretary. It's just that we ran up against the November fourth, uh, timeline. And the title company had, you know, had some concerns about whether. Whether that, you know, just filing was enough.
So are we gonna have to. Correct those deeds if the extension is granted to capture this resolution?
Uh, no, I believe that the resolution would, in the past, the resolution has, has sufficed. Uh, that to provide that we have the, the legal extension.
Now, we're not. Gonna approve that resolution though until January fifth. Is that, does that create a problem?
Well.
Provided we prove this.
Yes, we, we, we did provide a form of resolution for consideration by the board tonight. Uh, I'll defer to you that we're, we're hoping that, that it could be approved since it's straightforward. Only because the, we can't close without the resolution adopted.
Sure.
And Chairman, I. I neglected to mention that and I have no issue as it's administrative, really in my mind, I think. What Mr. Harrington is expressing. Uh, under the statute, they, they have a hundred ninety days to record the subdivision deed. And I can tell you that Hudson County is about two months behind because of the pandemic. Bergen County is about four months behind, uh, in the recording of these documents. So. I did take a look at it. I have no issue with memorializing it this evening if the board approves it since it's, it's really a administrative. Matter.
Yeah, counsel, if you've. You know, reviewed it, I have no problem with it. Okay, uh, anything else, Mr. Harrington? That was it?
That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? On a one year extension? Anybody?
You know, public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Tim, do you want to add anything?
I have no comment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash one four seven as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Takor.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Doctor Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Uh, I think that was nine votes already, correct? I think we have an extra vote.
Yes.
Oh, uh, I will abstain. So we only have nine votes on this. Um, Mr. Harrington, I will be in the planning office tomorrow if, uh. If you can get these over to planning and I'll, you know, I don't want to overstep Erica, but I'll sign them tomorrow if they're there.
You've already signed them. We just, we needed to do the extension.
Okay, I don't have to sign a new resolution?
Well, the resolution, yes.
Yeah, yeah, you think you can make it happen?
Sure.
Have the resolution so we can sign it virtually like we've been doing.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I forgot. Never mind.
But thank you.
Gonzalez, just make sure that's on your.
I've added it. Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh. Favor, uh, Chairman Langston abstains to do one extra.
Okay, uh, so let's move on to the next extension is item twenty eight is case P two zero dash one five one. As an administrative amendment for a two year extension, the address being two fifty three Academy Street, one oh one Tours Avenue.
Hi, um, it's Heather Coomer. I just need you to promote our architect, Richard Garber.
Sure. We're gonna. Are we really gonna have testimony for a two year?
It's just showing you that it's one gray material for another gray material and that the color is staying the same. Very short.
Okay.
Um, so I remember, my name is Heather Coomer from Connell Foley. I'm representing Moxie Holdings LLC. And we're asking for a. Administrative amendment for preliminary and final site major site plan approval, um, as well as a two year extension request. This was a. Um, a project that was approved in September twelfth, two thousand seventeen, and then it was memorialized October tenth, two thousand seventeen. Two years went by. Unfortunately, they had issues in construction for encountering some rock bed. In Journal Square. Uh, the property is located in Journal Square redevelopment area. Um, in Zone A, uh, the project was originally for five story building with seventy nine units. The administrative amendment that we were asking for is and which Richard is gonna very quickly say is that it's one. Material, gray material to another gray material. So you can just very briefly show that. Um, and so, and after that, that's the conclusion of our presentation. Hope that was quick enough.
Sure. Okay, let's bring up Mr. Garber then.
Hi, Rich. Let me just swear you in, all right?
Yep.
You swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Richard Garber, G A R B E R, license good till July twenty twenty one.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Garber. We've qualified you previously, so you are once again qualified.
Chris. Okay, so we'll be very fast. Two fifty three Academy Street is a, uh, a project we've been working on, as Heather said. You see the project, uh, earlier today. I, I went to the site. This is a modular project, five stories, twenty nine units, almost done. And, uh, the reason why we, we wanted to show some, some drawings is, uh, we are changing the exterior materials. Uh, not changing the colors or the actual materials themselves, but the manufacturer of the materials are moving to a ceraklad. Uh, we had originally, um, uh, proposed a cementous fiber panel, uh, dark gray ribbed corduroy on the bottom. Of the building on floor one, and then a kind of, uh, gray, as you see here, what's called Ashler Slate. On the upper four floors of the building. The original materials that we had were actually, um, proposed. To be installed so that the jointing was primarily vertically, vertical up and down. And it turns out that the ceraklad materials actually have a horizontal joining, jointing. So, um. It's fairly difficult to see here, but, um, you can see the window pattern is, is exactly the same. Um, the, the panel joints in the top, uh, approved elevation are more squareish. The more, uh, the proposed, uh, a building down below is more horizontal in nature, as I said. And, uh, this is the Tours Avenue elevation and we wrap to the, um, Academy Street elevation. Again, no change in the windows, no change in the overall formal configuration of the building, just some nice horizontal joints that we, um, support. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garber. Um, anybody, any questions, Mr. Garber? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Counsel, anything else?
Uh, we did submit for your consideration, uh, we prepared a proposed a resolution with Erica if, um. You know, if the board decides to vote on this, we do have that just because the timely nature of it. Um, that would be greatly appreciated. Uh, and that's pretty much it. And have a great New Year and. New Year, see you guys in the New Year. Have a happy holidays.
You too. Um, Santo, have you seen, uh, the resolution?
I have, and I also have no issue with that resolution as well.
Okay, excellent. Uh, so at this time, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anybody from the public?
You know, public, Mr. Chair, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Mr. Garber, you can stop sharing your screen if you wish. And, uh, Tim, do you have anything to add?
No comment.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash one five one as presented to the board here tonight.
Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Takor.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Uh, Council President Waterman.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
I'm sorry.
I needed to get nine. I'm trying to. And Chairman Langston.
Um, just a quick question. Santo, if I abstain again, so we only have nine votes, can I still sign the resolution?
I abstain.
But I think that you would be the ninth vote. Is that not?
Uh, Commissioner Cruz was the ninth vote.
No, I didn't. I, I left off Doctor Desai.
Doctor Desai should not be voting because she's the open.
Okay, understood. Um, Doctor Desai though is, you know, allowed to stay on and.
Yes, she can participate. She just can't vote. And we have the full complement.
Okay, okay, so, um.
So you can vote.
Okay, I'm an I.
All in favor, motion passes, uh, approving.
Okay, thank you. Um. So let's go back to item number twelve is case P two zero dash zero nine six. Is it administrative amendment for seventeen to twenty three Perrine Avenue?
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, chairman. Good evening, council. My name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney with Genova Burns in Jersey City. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant seventeen twenty three Perrine Avenue Development LLC. Uh, the application before you is for administrative amendment, uh, site plan amendment to the preliminary and final major site plan approval. Uh, obtained in two thousand eighteen. I did provide notice, uh, as we were originally scheduled, I think, for the November twenty fourth. Uh, hearing, we did carry it to tonight's meeting. I just ask, uh, Santo to confirm that that's accurate.
Thank you, counsel. I am to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at seventeen dash twenty three Perrine Avenue here in the city. All does appear to be in order. Chairman, we can mark that as a one. And counsel, I was reviewing the application. It appears to me that your. Approval is still valid. And that you're shrinking the building.
That's correct. Correct.
So. It should be pretty brief. We're relocating the transformer room.
Super brief presentation. I feel like I have a moral obligation at this point to not only the board members, but to the, my colleagues and applicants underneath me to move this along. I know it's the last meeting. Uh, so yes, I will be very brief.
We appreciate it.
Okay, so simply put, this is.
Thank you, counsel.
Sorry. Simply, this is a, I'm sorry, I'm going too fast now. Um, seventeen twenty three Perrine Avenue, uh, block one oh eight oh three, lots two through four. Located in Zone Four of the Journal Square redevelopment or Journal, Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment area governed by the Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan. In two thousand eighteen, this board approved a six story forty eight unit, uh, project, uh, on the site. Uh, it was all as of right. Uh, and that in about a year ago, December third, two thousand nineteen, I appeared before you asking for a site plan extension. And at the time, at, at the time I appeared before you, I had said, and one of the bases is for, uh, requesting the extension. Is that a new owner came into place, uh, my, my client now, the current applicant. And they were looking at potentially ways to revise and upgrade, uh, the building that was, uh, the project that was approved. So, and I said that to you on the record, and I'm here tonight to present, or we're here tonight to present those. Minor upgrades, but I think vastly improve the project that you've previously approved. Uh, they include civil engineering, uh, the creation of a stormwater detention basin. Uh, from the architectural side, we are decreasing the building footprint, increasing setbacks, decreasing the building footprint. Increasing building setbacks, eliminating blank walls on the eastern and western elevations and putting windows there. And just upgrading, uh, bu- building and facade materials. And as, as counsel alluded to, putting in a transformer room. I have two witnesses, potentially one, depending on if the board wants to hear questions from George Gloode, our civil engineer. Who prepared the, uh, plans as part of the creation or the construction of the stormwater detention basin. And then I have our architect, uh, Adrian Melia from MVMK, who will quick, quickly run you through the architectural aspects of the changes that we're requesting. So if the board wants to hear from Mr. Gloode, I could call him to testify as to the, the stormwater. Uh, they are shown in the plans that we provided, but I will leave it to you, chairman, as to whether you want to hear from Mr. Gloode.
Um, to be honest, I'm really the only one that ever wants to hear from any of the civil engineers. Um, I, I don't know that it's necessary. Um, maybe we just jump right to your architect and, uh, we'll take it from there.
Okay, and I, Mr. Gloode's available if, if the commissioners have any questions, so perfectly acceptable on this.
We appreciate Mr. Gloode coming, coming by tonight.
Thank you, George. Uh, I guess at this point, if we, oh, there he is. There's Adrian. Adrian, you're on mute.
Adrian, let me just swear you in, okay? Do you swear any testimony you're gonna give tonight? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
It's A D R I A N. Last name is M E L I A.
Mr. Melia, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you previously, I believe. Are you, you're the architect, record on this project?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so your license is current tonight?
Um, sorry, just the architect, but we weren't, we weren't the original architect on this application, but I have been in front of this board before.
Okay, understood. Uh, and your license is current tonight, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're qualified.
So Adrian, you heard my little opening. Uh, why don't you just dive right in and run the board through some of these, uh, updates and improvements that we're, uh, seeking approval for tonight?
Okay, um, I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody see the, uh, front cover of the zoning set?
We can.
We got.
Okay, uh, so again, I'll, I'll note, we weren't the original architect for this application. New owner wanted to amend the. The design essentially, so we have a new aesthetic. Uh, in addition to that, we were tasked to rework, uh, the layouts, um, but also ahead of construction. We were, um, asked to integrate all the building code, accessibility, utility requirements into a fully conforming variance waiver free. Uh, amended application. Um, so for my presentation tonight, I have, uh, the, some color renderings, but also I just want to start with the. Um, the set that was filed with the board, uh, that shows both the approved and amended plans. Uh, side by side, so the board can easily see how, what the amendments are. So this is the Z one sheet. Um, that you all have. It has the zoning tabulation chart. You can see approved, proposed, no variances, no waivers below that tabulation chart. A list all the amendments. Um, we could just blow through them real quick. We, we updated the survey a little. Um, the lot lines appeared to be a little bit off on the previous. Uh, application. Uh, we reduced the building footprint, and I'll go into that when you see the plan, from eighty one percent to seventy six percent. Um, the front yard setback, just a minimal, um, one inch increase. Side yard setbacks, the, the lot lines are skewed, so, so the dimensions vary. And what we added about a foot of a setback on the east and, um, on the rear, we went from a zero. Foot setback to, um, over five feet. So it goes from about five foot two on one end to six foot five on the other. Uh, and then, um, the integration of the transformer room. So, so there was no transformer room provision for this application. Um. We can't do a padmated transformer. The, the, uh, the, um, redevelopment plan explicitly states that, so it has to be integrated into the building and it's, it's a. It's a huge room, so it, it triggered a lot of plant, um, changes. Uh, we had to basically reconfigure the whole plan, um, just to maintain our, uh, unit count. And then there's some amenity spaces, et cetera, that got, we worked, uh, along with that. Um, but I just want to point out that we're not changing any of the bulk requirements. The height remains the same. Uh, the, uh, density remains the same, unit breakdown is the same. And even so, all of the green features that were proposed in the original. And even all of the green features that were proposed in the original applications, such as the green roof area. You know, LED lighting, everything that was listed on the previous application is the same. We have a detention tank. You know, we're not detracting in any way from any of those aspects of the original approval. Just to orient everybody to where this is. On sheet Z one A, this is the back of the DMV on Summit, so Perrine is right behind that and our lot is comprised of these three, our site is comprised of these three lots, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-three, so there are three existing houses there. Z two is just the existing survey of the same. Z three is side by side, on the left you have what the approved site plan was, and on the right you have our amended one. Again, the east setback, we increased it by about a foot so that we could put some windows on what was a blank wall previously. And in the back, we pulled the building back and you'll see when I go to the floor plan why we did that. Z four is just a typical detail sheet with a base plan here. That I will come back to if necessary, but this is the, where all the main changes are on the first floor plan. You can see the transformer room, how, how big it is, the original plan didn't account for that. The original plan didn't have a trash chute or compactor room, that had to be integrated. And we also you see these, these inner courtyards where the units face each other and there's no windows facing the exterior, we, we essentially transferred these areas to the back to create a rear yard setback and some usable area for the units back there. So again, no change to the unit breakdown, we were able to integrate the transformer and lose some frontage by pulling the, the cores in off the outside of the building and reducing the amount of wasted square footage in the circulation. So that's how we maintained, you know, the, the existing unit areas and breakdown. But we're able to add this transformer. Nothing changes in the front, we had, you know, ample bike parking and green area, it all stays the same. Typical floor plan. See, there were no windows on, on the sides, we just pulled the building back so that we can have building code compliant windows, these are like New York views that we can benefit from as well as not having the neighbors look at a, you know, a significantly tall facade adjacent to them with, that's just blank. Again, net result of all of these changes was we reduced the lot air, lot coverage from eighty-one to seventy-six percent. But ultimately, it's the same project, roof plan, same amenities, we're doing P-TAX instead of split system HVAC, so we were able to make more outdoor area available, but we still meet the same, the, the green roof that we originally proposed. Again, you can see the, the bulkheads which are on the edge of the building and would have been visible from the street are now in at least ten feet off the side, so they're you know, not visible from the street. And just moving past your detail sheets. Z nine, we get to the elevations where you can do a side by side comparison, and I won't dwell on these because I have some color renderings that probably give you a better sense of what was existed or what was approved and what is amended. I will switch to these, which the board may not have, this will be first exhibit, which was the approved rendering from the other architect. Where it was kind of a random composition of bricks.
Counsel, let's mark that as a two.
Will do. And I'll get that to planning, get these to planning.
So it's a, it's kind of a random composition of materials, brick, metal, and siding on the front. And the, the new owner really just wanted a different aesthetic, kind of a more high-end look. So we came up with this more. It's a more uniform look, shall we say, with brick that extends higher, it goes to four floors on the front, it's a full brick, not a thin brick. This is another exhibit, if you want to mark it. A three.
Yes.
So you, uniform windows with cement board panels on, on the top two floors. Again, like a fully landscaped font with street trees as per the previous approval. The transformer room is hidden with a similar aesthetic to the rest of the building, the main entry is here on this side. We also have a three D view, this can be exhibit A four. Which is a look from the east. Again, the original approval, it had a giant blank wall here. Just by pulling in the building a fraction, we were able to add windows to it to kind of break up that blank wall, we've returned the brick around the corners, it's the same treatment on the west side. They're sort of identical facades. And then the rear facade will be all cement board in this configuration. We also have a material board, I do have a hard copy that I can drop to planning, but this is the electronic version. You know, it's end panels in three different colors, kind of create variation here. Along with a, a full brick. And running bond, a nice Hudson red kind of brick color you'd see typically in Jersey City. Those are the exhibits, unless there's anything the board would like to elaborate on, that concludes my testimony. Thank you, Mr. Melia. Did you just coin the term Hudson red?
That's a good. I don't think I coined it.
Okay, I like it though, I like it. I, I have no questions, anybody from the board, any questions?
Commissioner Torres. The setback that you did on the side of the building. He's west, how far set are you, you're bringing it back? You just say it's a setback of a little bit. I think Z seven went too fast, I couldn't see the numbers. How far back is it?
So the, if you look at the, the three D view, this facade on the east was, this wall on the original approval was setback only two feet four inches.
Two feet four?
Yes, on the, on the original approval. So that, that creates a couple of issues, usually the fire department like at least three feet. So we've provided that and changed to, to enable us to put a, like a fence up against the property line, which benefits both this building and the neighbor in terms of privacy. So we've, we've gone from a two foot four setback with a blank wall to a three foot four setback, it varies a little bit because the site plan is skewed. To enable us to put windows on and also to maintain at least three feet for fire department access around the entire building.
And we know that your neighbors could eventually one day build a piece of pop that I do.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I like, I like the larger setback, that is always better.
To that point. We did consider the neighbor, to that point, the, the ordinance is written that the setback must be five feet from the adjacent building. So with that, this proposal of pulling the building back actually enables them to build closer to us than the previous approval. Which they only, there's only one lot left between this building and the parking lot behind the DMV. So, you know, while, while it's only, you know, a foot or so, if that's significant to the neighbor, they, they will gain benefit from the fact that we pulled the building back.
Okay, okay, that's all I got.
Okay, anybody else, any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Melia. Thank you. Counsel.
Chairman, that, that would conclude our presentation, I would just ask respectfully that the board approve our application as presented here tonight. It doesn't add any variances and it still has a break, so thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? If you could, please raise your hand, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
We have a raised hand, I believe.
Sure.
Paul, can you hear me? Paul.
Mr. Melia, can you unshare your docs there?
Paul, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
I can hear you now, Paul, can you turn on your video?
Turn on my video, I thought it was, where is that?
It's next to the.
You mean share screen or?
No.
Oh. Start my video, I see.
Yes, yeah, I just popped that up for you.
All right.
I'm a little slow here. So sorry about that. I hope you don't dock me for the time.
You're three minutes in.
God, all right.
Paul, let me swear.
Get my name out there. You all know me by now.
Sure, just want to swear you in.
Um, yeah, sure, okay, go ahead.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And I know we all know you, but can you state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, my first name is Paul, P A U L. And it's last name Di Branco, D I capital B as in boy, R A N C O. First of all, I want to quickly take some time here to express my condolences to all of you on a lost member of your family. Mr. Sebarowski, John Sebarowski. I'm a great guy, I mean, really public minded, and I wish I got to know him better, but I always felt that ethically I couldn't talk to him when I saw him at the meetings. So I, I, I really sadly missed, and my condolences to everybody on the board, you knew him better than me. Okay, so when I first saw this application, I was absolutely horrified because I, I never knew what it was like to live in a fishbowl until, until I saw this. I'm on, they call it east elevation, but it's really the north side. And so, um, I'm concerned about privacy, okay, and also about noise. You know, there's a changing cast of characters all the time in apartment buildings, and you can get your good ones and your bad ones, so. And P-Tech machines, a whole wall, I counted forty-six windows. And but even beyond that, I started scratching my head as to, well, why are they doing this? Because everywhere I go, including the previously approved application, always has sheer walls on the sides. Now, while I don't like that, and I fought this, as you know, it's the lesser of two evils. And if you do a little research, you find out why you never see this, actually, it's because it's in the violation of two, in, two codes that are part of the International Building Code, and there's a New Jersey edition. Okay, the International Building Code, the first one it violates is seven oh five point eight, which states maximum area of exterior wall openings based on fire separation distance and degree of opening protection, what this means, and they have a table. Unfortunately, I can't produce it like your architects can, but what it is, is that if you're anywhere less than five feet, you can only have a fifteen percent window openings, coverage of the wall fifteen percent. There at an area study of that wall shows that they're at twenty-seven percent. So the table will indicate in this IBC New Jersey, it's a published book or guide that in order to have that many windows, you need to be five to ten feet away from the property line. Now let's, let's get that straight, because this is the biggest scam I think I see on these planning board hearings. They always want to measure from building imprint, building footprint to building footprint, no. It's measured from the property line to your building footprint, and they're, and they admitted it tonight, they're only three feet. So they have to cut that down by half the windows that are, that are on, on my side, on the north side and and they have to be at least five to ten feet, that's number one violation of the International Building Code used in New Jersey. Number two is section twelve, twelve oh five, I think it's point one and point two, and this basically says that if you want windows period on side walls, you have to, you started three feet separation for a two-story building, then you go up one foot for each story. This is a seven-story building, because under the IBC rules, a roof amenity space, which they didn't have before is counted as a story. Therefore, it puts them at eight feet, one foot for each one above two stories, so therefore they gotta go at least eight feet off. And on my neighbor's side, on the other side, that's another eight feet, which means sixteen feet of square footage they lose. Now you know why nobody ever does this, okay, because they don't want to lose the square footage and the rental space. Okay, there's two more things that I'd like to throw in here, don't let anybody tell you here that this is not in your jurisdiction. You better believe it's in your jurisdiction for this planning board to do something about this. Because, and I think a planner for the Pierceall Avenue even quoted this section from the Jersey City ordinances, which is taken directly from the municipal land use law, three forty-five, three forty, section three forty-five dash two states that the purpose of this chapter, in other words, the zoning laws of New Jersey and the state, is to secure fire safety, okay, secure, and, and then B, it says to ensure preservation of proper light, air, and open space. The first, the first one that I mentioned, seven oh five point eight about being five feet off, that's because windows can spread fire, the window can shoot out. Okay, so, so the one thing they're in violation of ensures, ensures fire safety, and the second one preserves light, air, and open space, and that is under the zoning laws of the state and the city, and you have a lot of power here, this board and a lot of discretion, and you could vote this down right now based on that, okay? Because if you, if you're not looking out to secure the public from fire, the whole thing is fire, flood, and natural disaster, but from fire and to preserve light, air, and open space, just like in Pierceall Avenue. What are you here for? I mean, that's it, that's your core values, those are the.
That's your, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Chairman, quickly, first, we are in the Journal Square twenty-sixty redevelopment plan, so the purposes and the goals of that plan govern this application, and I think you've heard testimony from our architect that the amendments that we're seeking, specifically the issues that Paul brought up, are code compliant and plan compliant. And frankly, I don't know what Paul's background is or educational training, I don't know where he was pulling those IBC codes from, I don't know if he's an architect or an engineer. So I'm not going to go down that rabbit hole. But I could tell you, you've just heard expert testimony from our architect, and Adrian, you could correct me where I'm wrong or fill in. But we are increasing light and air here from what was previously approved, and the increase that we're providing is compliant with Jersey City Building Code.
Okay, thank you Counsel. Anybody else from public, if you could, please raise your hand.
I promoted Chris Lam.
Sure.
Hi, Chris. I just want to swear you in.
Okay.
Give me the right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Chris Lam, C H R I S, L A M M.
Good evening, we have five minutes for you.
Good evening, thank you. So I chair the Construction and Planning Committee of the Journal Square Community Association, and I'll just take a couple of minutes, I just wanted to speak largely consistent with the, the comments you heard from Mr. Di Branco. I, I do share a concern with an apparent inconsistency between the, the International Business Code that New Jersey has adopted as state law. And what the applicant says is, is code compliant, particularly with respect to. um, and what the applicant says is, is code compliant, particularly with respect to the, the, uh, the coverage of windows and, and the, the proximity of those openings, uh, those exterior wall openings, um, to the, to the adjacent property line. Um, so I, I, I share that concern. I think overall, the most, most of the changes to the site plan are for the better. Um, you know, the change in building materials, uh, and look of the building, I, I would say is much improved, uh, and I, I appreciate a lot of those changes. Um, but the, you know, the, the concern with windows for me primarily is a, is a public safety concern, um, and would ask for the, for the board to consider that. Um, another issue I just caught, uh, during the presentation, um, was that in the initial site plan, the already approved site plan, there were five street trees shown, and the proposed new site plan, there are only four. They did have five in their three-dimensional model, but the, the, um, the new site plan only showed four. Um, so I would ask, uh, for a condition that, that the maximum number of street trees, hopefully that is five, um, be, be included in the new site plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lam. Uh, counsel, can we nail down five street trees?
I don't think that's a problem, Adrian. Uh, can the site support that of another tree?
Uh, certainly, we have some, um, the forestry standards, obviously, we have to comply with those, and, uh, we don't have a driveway or like hydrant or any obstructions like that, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, and I can confirm, I just heard from my client, uh, we'll make five trees work.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I've promoted Mitch N.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Mitch. Are you able to turn your video on?
Can you guys see me?
We cannot. You gotta start it.
I lost connection.
Alright, there we go, Mitch. Uh, I just want to swear you in, okay?
Sure.
Give me the right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And for the record, could you state and spell your name, and could you just speak up a little too?
Absolutely, yes. First name is Mitch, M-I-G-C-H, last name is Nasiri, which is N-A-S-S-I-R-I.
Uh, good evening, sir. We have five minutes for you, and if you could, just, um, try and get closer to the microphone. We're having a little trouble hearing you.
Okay, so, so just, just thanks actually for everybody's time today, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to speak here today. Um, so I've been actually, uh, I moved to Jersey City from Queens back in nineteen ninety-nine. So, uh, the, the project actually that's gonna be taking place at that particular block there, uh, I have a lot of friends that, uh, I know their kids, and they grew up like in front of me, you know, since they were like little boys, we had barbecues in there, we have all kinds of things. Uh, we've seen a lot of changes. I really love the, the, the plans and whatever the, uh, 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 several, uh, okay, people with the name, I'm sorry, I apologize. Sepic Zillo and the team, that they showed us today, that there is like a nice, beautiful building that's gonna be taking place. Uh, uh, it's gonna be built right there in that, uh, section of, uh, Jersey City. But just what I wanna just add to this, what, uh, Mr. Lam and Mr. DeBranco brought to our, brought to our attention today, is actually this regarding the, uh, the addition, the, the proposal that would add in windows on the both sides of the building. Um, this actually, in the distance, you know, from the property line, you know, it violates two important provisions. Uh, one of them made the, the International Building Code of New Jersey, and, um, that's actually, that's, that's one of the, and the other one is one dealing with the, uh, fire safety, uh, and the, uh, providing actually, uh, adequate light and air, uh, to, uh, the neighboring, uh, buildings or the neighboring actually, uh, houses within the block there. So, the Journal Square actually twenty sixty, uh, twenty sixty actually plan is, is great. It has all kinds of new changes that come into town. Uh, it's just like, at the end of the day, if you recall, uh, back, if you read it properly, uh, it was like clear that's about harmony and making sure that buildings or neighbors, uh, have to be in way, uh, respected, and they, they have to be voiced in way to explain exactly their concerns. And, um, we, we've seen some changes and we love it, and, and we, we like whatever you guys are bringing to the neighborhood, and all those changes are great. But, uh, I think you should at least listen to, uh, some of the neighbors and to their concerns, uh, and they hope that we don't gonna just like, in, in fifty or sixty years from now, you have kids or kids, kids are fighting over like, uh, five or six or si- or, 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 or eight feet, uh, uh, concerns just about like, uh, you took too much of what you, your rights are, and, and, uh, you took that away from me. Uh, regarding, I mean, just like, I don't know how to describe it in, in a proper way today, but, but I am in way in line of what Mr. uh, Lam and, and Mr. Chris and, and DeBranco put today to our, to your attention, and to everyone's attention, and I hope you can take that into consideration. That's all what I need to say, and thank you for your time again.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Hey, anybody else from public? If you could, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine.
Seeing no more public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
A motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Um, Tim, seems like your night. You, can you wrap us up?
Uh, yeah, um. I had spoken with, uh, Mr. DeBranco, and he had relayed the concerns about the building code. Um, I relate to him. I, I don't know, and maybe Adrian can speak to this, um. I'm unsure as to what the building code has to, you know, where the standing is when it comes to, you know, is this something that down the road it goes, when it goes before building, it's addressed or not addressed? Because you, you said in your testimony that this meets all proper building codes. I know it meets the code, you know, it meets the requirements of the plan, and it's an as-of-right amendment. But I just wanted to know what your thoughts were on, uh, Mr. DeBranco's, uh, comments about the, uh, IBC.
Um, okay, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to respond. Um, I completely one hundred percent disagree with his assessment of the code. Um, he's misinterpreting some things, and I just want to clear this up for the board. Um, first of all, uh, one of the gentlemen talked about light and air. And whether or not there are windows on this, on these east or west facades, is, is, is irrelevant, because we're pulling the building in. So if the windows are there or not there, it doesn't matter. We're moving the building further away from the neighbors, okay? So with respect to light and air, that's not something that should be contested. We're actually improving light and air for the neighbors. Uh, he referenced some code sections. Uh, section seven oh five is the setback that you need in order to put openings in a wall. You need three foot one inch or more than three feet before you can put fifteen percent openings on the wall. That is the building code. I'm not talking about the redevelopment plan or zoning. I'm talking about building code. I would make the point that this is a six-story building. It is going to be non-combustible construction. It has to be. It can't be wood. It's going to be steel and concrete, because it, it has to be at six stories. It's also going to be sprinkled by code. It has to be. Um, there is no way that the building department in Jersey City will approve a building that violates the code with respect to setbacks. None. We do this on virtually all our buildings in Hoboken, Jersey City. They're all very densely populated areas that have buildings in close proximity to property lines. This is not something that's new to us. It happens on every single project that we have to do a calculation to show that we conform this. I would think that the board would want to consider that we purposely went from blank walls to provide these windows so that people weren't looking at a blank facade. We purposely lost sellable area to do this. It's not just a benefit for the owner. The owner doesn't really have to do this. They can provide aspects front and back for all the living areas on that typical floor plan without doing these windows. But doing the windows is fundamentally a good idea for a dozen reasons. So, there's no building code issue, none whatsoever. The, the other code section he was quoting about stepping in the building as you go up, that pertains to courts and yards. That's the twelve oh five section or whatever he was referencing here. That's when you have a building that's full lock coverage, and you're trying to do a little light well, and the light well is this kind of little hole in, in the building right up against the property line. In that instance, you need to increase as you go up, because you've got this tiny little light well. It's only, you know, three foot wide or such. So, he's mistaking that condition with, with what we have here, which is a continuous setback from front to back along the property line. Um, so I, I just want to be one hundred percent clear with the board. There is no IBC violation. We, we could not do that. We would be sued. It, it's just not gonna happen, and there, there's a, a fail-safe check here with the building department, where we have to provide that calculation to show compliance. So again, this isn't something that, you know, we're trying to do, like to, to gain something. We're, we're, we're losing area to make this a better project for the immediate area, for the project itself, and for the neighbors. It's a win-win. My, I can't understand why anybody would want to go against it. Thank you. Tim, do you have anything else?
Um, no, just that, uh, that the conditions in my staff report are accepted by the attorney. Um, that's it.
Okay. Condition, conditions are fine and acceptable.
Oh, and that, uh, that the street tree, uh, issue is looked into and, um, that it's mitigated.
And you're okay?
No problem there. No problem.
Excellent, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case.
I can give it all, if I may. Go ahead. We made the motion. I'm just curious about Adrian's testimony. Now, and just saying that you said that the building department wouldn't approve this. I'm not sure how the process usually works. Have you already contacted them, or have they already had conversation with you to approve it?
So, so essentially, Commissioner, that, what would happen is we would get an approval tonight. We would have to prepare plans that get signed by Chairman Langston and, uh, the Board Secretary. At the same time, the professionals, Adrian and his team, and, or his team are preparing construction drawings. And those construction drawings are submitted to the Buildings Department with the signature set plans, so that the Building Department reviews the approved plans to make sure that the construction plans we're submitting, you know, that we're gonna build the, 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 the project that we are approved. So at that point in time, they go through their own review process and determine code-compliant issues. Um, so that issue really is not a land use issue. I can understand the concern before this board now, but I think it would be addressed, and as Adrian said, it would be checked, uh, in the Buildings Department. And checked, what I mean is, if it doesn't make, if it doesn't comply, then we have an issue. Um, and that would be the stopgap, if, if it does, in fact, you know, taking comments as, you know, if, if, if it is an issue.
That's prior to the building permit being issued.
Correct.
So if that issue does present itself, uh, the Building Department won't issue the permit. They'll advise that you've got to either comply with the code, make a change, and that could be a number of the building codes, right? Could be a bunch of things that need to be altered in the construction drawings that, quite frankly, as counsel said, this board never sees, so we don't get into, uh, the construction drawings and whether or not those are even feasible, or, you know, if they're code-compliant, uh, under the building codes. That's something that obviously, when the Building Department does their review, and, I mean, it's, it's an extensive review. It takes, you know, months sometimes, uh, buildings of this nature. You know, it's not a two-week review where it comes back and, and you get your permits, like you're building a deck at your house. It's, it's a very detailed process that goes through all of the departments, plumbing, electrical, framing.
Building subcode, right.
Subcodes and et cetera, et cetera, so. Uh, I thank the gentleman for that clarification. I think it helps the board in understanding the interplay between land use and, and the building codes, but we don't really get into the building codes. It's, it's not really in our jurisdiction.
So I just want to make sure that there'd be some way I can get it addressed, since it was brought up here tonight for us.
Oh, I, I, we're not done, um, and, and I, and, and the point is, i- if it's, if, if it's an issue, it'll get caught in the Buildings Department.
So.
Thank you. Commissioner Horton, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. I would like to make a motion now to approve case P two zero dash zero nine six, that's presented to the board here tonight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Um, I printed the testimony tonight, and I, I understand a lot of their concerns, given the area. Um, but given what, uh, Adrian testified to, I'm gonna say a aye to this as well.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Tocor.
Aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Um, um, I just want to put on record that I, I'm in the fire safety industry. I've been in almost twenty years now. And I, I work all over North Jersey, and, um, I have to say, if, if this doesn't comply with building code, there's no building department in the state that I would trust more than Jersey City's. Um, by far, we have the, the best fire subcode officials that I've ever dealt with. So, um, you know, I, I'm gonna leave it in their hands. I'm no expert in the, the International Building Code. Um, don't tell my boss that, but I, I'm not. So I, I am gonna leave it in their hands, and I'm gonna vote aye on this. Um, the only problem I really have with the project is the P-Tech units. Um, I, I'd much rather see, you know, a conventional system rather than P-Tech units. I, I just think they're inefficient. And, um, but I, I think overall, it is a better building than, than what's been approved there before, so it's an aye.
All in favor, motion passes with staff conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Uh, Mike, do you want to take a break? It's nine thirty.
Uh, yeah, this is probably a reasonable time. I'm just trying to look at the next item on the agenda.
Um, yeah, let's take the break now.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay, thank you, guys. We'll be back in five. Okay, could we come to order again, everybody? And I do want to make an announcement real quick. Uh, we usually have a ten o'clock cutoff. Uh, given that this was our last meeting of the year, I did ask the board if I could push that cutoff a little bit. Um, I gotta tell you, one application can throw off an entire agenda. Uh, this one was, you know, to say the least, ambitious tonight to begin with. Um, I I gotta say, I don't think we get past six fifty Grove Street tonight. Um, I think that'll most likely be our last application tonight. So um, you know, if anybody wants to come forward now um and carry their application to our next meeting, which is January fifth, uh, feel free. But um, you're more than welcome to hang on, but I I really don't think we get past that Grove Street application tonight, but uh we'll see, see how it goes. Uh, so at this time, I am going to call item thirteen as case P two zero dash zero eight six, uh, the address being thirty to thirty two Jones Street for a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances.
Great. Thank you, Chairman. Stephen Joseph from the Shawnee Law Firm for the applicant. Um, counsel, can I confirm you have received my notices?
Thank you, counsel. I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to this application. All appears to be in order. And jurisdictions proper before the board.
Only other minor note is that we have a, we have an exhibit. It's just a presentation set that that the architect is presenting tonight. Um, I sent that to to staff and and to Michael uh prior to this hearing, so I'd like to mark that as evidence at this time.
All right, so counsel, we're gonna mark the notices A one and we'll mark that exhibit as A two. And when we get to that, the witness can identify it for the record.
Great, thank you. Good?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Joseph.
Thank you. Um, okay, so thirty thirty two Jones, these are two lots mid block between uh New Kirk and SIP in zone four of the Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan. The applicant is proposing a five story nineteen unit building here with no parking. In order to accomplish this, uh, the applicant is requesting site plan approval with a deviation for building height. Fifty four feet is are permitted. We're requesting fifty five feet, so it's a one foot deviation. Um, we have two experts, our architect, GMA Architects, Ahmed is going to be testifying tonight. Um, I don't know if I see him up yet and um Sam from Drosner Robin is going to be our planner, I believe. So if we could find, um, there we go. We got Ahmed and Sam, okay. Right, so it's.
Hey, man, um, let me just swear you in. He's writing a testimony you give tonight. It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, Ahmed Amara. Last name is E M A R A.
Mr. Amara, good evening. Um, obviously, we've qualified you numerous times in the past few months. Um, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we're qualified. Thank you.
Thank you. So um, I'll take you through the presentation. Thank you, Stephen, for the quick intro. Chairman Screen. So as Stephen um stated, it's thirty thirty two Jones. Uh, this is a quick image of the present, the project we're we're proposing here.
And sorry to interrupt, but thi- this is the the presentation set that we entered into A two um as as evidence.
Correct, yes, this this will be sent. Um, just a quick introduction to the site. Um, I'm sure um, you know, some of the people on the present on the in the meeting would like to know. Uh, Jones Street is right here. It's within about ten minute walk from Journal Square. Again, Jones, SIP and New Kirk. Um, next to it is thirty four thirty six Jones. We were also involved with that project. The site uh area for this uh for thirty and there there are two slots combined, so it's about five, it's a little over five thousand square feet. The proposed gross building of the total building is a little over twenty thousand square feet. It's it's all residential. And it's it's in the zone four neighborhood mixed use of the Journal Square uh twenty sixty redevelopment plan. As uh Stephen has mentioned, we have a a few deviations. One of them is the height. So permitted is five stories, fifty four feet, and what we're posing is fi- five stories, fifty five feet. Uh, and also there is a uh a a front slash rear yard setback. Uh, the maximum allowable to be built from the front of the building is seventy feet. Uh, we have a maximum of seventy feet, but the whole building is set back five feet, which I'll show. Um, so that ends up being instead of thirty foot rear yard, we have a twenty five foot rear yard. And I'll show that. Uh, again, this is the, this would be the site right here. This building would be demolished. Uh, we're matching the height of the building next door. And this is thirty uh four thirty six Jones. So uh to get into the presentation, the front, we're required to have a fifteen foot set, fifteen foot sidewalk in this area based on the redevelopment plan. Uh, thirty four thirty six Jones, they uh we elected there to align with the building next door, which is at ten feet and actually angle the facade back to its fifteen feet to reach the fifteen feet um uh permitted or required, I should say. For thirty thirty two Jones, we're basically sticking with the fifteen feet here. So we set back, so a total of fifteen feet, but we have five, ten feet outside of the property line, and then we set back the building within the property line, five feet to get the total of fifteen feet. Um, this is, I want to say that this plane here is all angling and then the yellow that I'm showing here is basically the parallel to the to the sidewalk. Uh, and then we have these balconies here, some of them that actually she match the angle of the building next door and some that reverse it. This is, this shows what I was describing, the angle, the angle of the building next door. And how we, even though we match, we have the fifteen foot setback and we meet the building here, we follow the same angle for the balcony. This is the um setback I was referring to. The total building is still seventy feet right here from this point to the front is still seventy feet, but because we set back five feet here to create the the fifteen foot sidewalk, we end up with um twenty five instead of thirty. I also want to mention here that the thirty foot line is the red line here. We only have the protrusions happen here and here. And we have a quick image of the back of the building to show you that the balconies are all. We set back and create these outdoor spaces. Um, and then only these portions here that come into the uh rear yard area. The materials that we're proposing today are brick, white brick here, here and in the frontage, and it wraps the top also. And we have black aluminum as long a- along with white aluminum that would be wrapping the balcony and the planters in front of the uh, I'm sorry, the the balconies here and the planter up top. And for the lobby entry area that would be inside, I would actually also continue to the outside a white porcelain tile. This is a quick section of the building to show the total height here at fifty five instead of fifty four. Uh, we have a mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms in the building. We have a total of nineteen units. As mentioned before, we have uh twelve one bedrooms, two one bedrooms plus then, and we have four two bedrooms and one two, a one bedroom plus then. The first floor layout has a one bedroom in the front, a one bedroom plus then in the back and a two bedroom in the back. Both units in the back have access to um a rear yard uh deck. The units above have the outdoor spaces in the decks and then also the units in the front get their small Juliette balconies. And the units stack, so the layout repeats. Uh, we do have a proposed roof deck area with um a a green roof tray trays um in the back of the building, the sides, and also they buffer also in the front. We've talked about this before in interest of time. I'm not gonna uh go over it too much, but this is something that we've we've been trying to push in Jersey City with all our projects, improving their quality, adding to the stormwater management. We think that gr- green roofs are really important, especially in a dense city such like ours. Um, and this is a rendering of the roof deck and what we envision it to be uh with the greenery and the and the pavers here. Um, and this concludes uh my presentation.
Great, thank you. Let's um, let's get Sam sworn in for some brief plan.
Let's uh, let's open it up for questions from Mr. Amara first, please.
Apologies.
Um, I I, you actually just answered my one question. I was curious whether the uh the green roof was accessible to the public, but it's uh there is fencing around that, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and um, you know, I do appreciate the green roof. I know you've been pushing that lately and I I love it. And uh my question always is how it's gonna be maintained. Uh, there's somebody on site that can, you know, contain any overgrowth that happens?
So so yes, so what I will, I want to show here is this, in this project, what we're proposing is green roof trays and those are about four inches, uh, two by two trays and four inches deep. Um, so these are very simple to um maintain and and this this will be something that's maintained by the building management. Um, I I would actually encourage the building management to have a few of them accessible for to the to the building tenants, because this could be a really nice sort of a small urban farm for the ne- for the residents. It's something that they can gather around in summer and, you know, have some herbs and basil and stuff like that.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mara.
Okay, great. Now we could uh get Sam or planner sworn in.
Hi, Sam. Uh, do you want any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Samuel Bellamy, S A M U E L, Bellamy, B E L L A M Y.
And Mr. Bellamy, we've qualified you as well. Your license is current tonight?
Um, this is actually my first time presenting in front of this board.
Really?
I was going to say.
I I could have swore we've seen you before. Okay. So why don't we go over your qualifications, please?
Sure. So I'm a newly licensed professional planner. I'm with the firm Drosner Robin. Um, I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, also a certified professional planner with the AICP. Um, and I've been with the firm Drosner Robin for the past three and a half years, working on development and redevelopment projects.
Okay, and your new license is current tonight in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're qualified.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sam, Sam, just to interrupt, let me know if you need to, if you need me to scroll to any images that I had. Okay, um, so in preparation of my testimony, I did review the Journal Square redevelopment plan, also the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance and Master Plan. Um, I also visited the site to um see the the property conditions and surrounding area conditions. Um, we are requesting several deviations with our site plan approval. Um, the architect did a good job of going through the building, so I'm going to get right into the variances. First of which is for the um rear yard requirements. Above the ground floor, buildings are only permitted to extend seventy feet from a right of way funding the property. We are proposing seventy five feet. Um, as our architect mentioned, this is the account for the the five foot front yard setback that we are providing. Um, so that the bulk of the building is shifted that that five feet back, um, triggering this deviation. Um, lining up with the buildings to the north, we we do, uh, we are consistent with the building on the construction directly adjacent to the north. And also the the multifamily buildings further north along Jones Street, um, that they extend deeper into the property. Um, so therefore, I I believe we are consistent with the uh rear yard depth of the building. Um, the next variance we are asking for is for maximum building height. We're proposing fifty five feet.
We're proposing fifty-five feet where fifty-four feet is permitted. Um, the additional one foot of building height allows for the ground floor units to be raised three feet above grade. Um, this will provide for additional security and privacy of those ground floor units. And also as a requirement of the redevelopment plan for, um, ground floor residential units. The lobby will be at grade and is ADA accessible. Um, and so those three additional feet that we're providing, we're only requesting the one, the one foot in building height, which is rather de minimis. Um, the next requirement that I'm going to talk a little bit about is the front yard setback. Um, the five foot front yard setback provides for the fifteen foot required sidewalk width in the, um, in this area. Along Jones Street in the redevelopment plan. Um, the redevelopment plan also has a requirement to match the predominant setback of the block. Um, as we do, we do match the adjacent building that is under construction to the north and also further north along Jones Street. Um, I did want to mention that the, the two-story buildings south of our building have approximately thirteen foot setbacks. Um, so we're about eight foot off of that. I believe that what we're proposing is consistent with the sidewalk width and consistent with the redevelopment plan. And will, um, provide for, uh, pedestrian experience along Jones Street. The other variance, uh, deviation we're, we're asking for tonight is for the front cantilevered balconies. Um, they will extend approximately three feet from the building where a maximum twelve feet projection is permitted. Um, this projection will be completely within our property boundaries. Um, it will not extend into the right of way and is also consistent with the, the building to the north.
Um, I think you mean to, you meant twelve inches, right?
Yes, correct, so, uh, twelve inches from the building. Um, so these balconies will allow for extra amenity space for the tenants of the building. And then getting into the purposes of the, um, the mun- municipal land use law. Um, it is a permitted use and it's consistent with the redevelopment, consistent with purpose I, uh, promoting the general welfare. Consistent with purpose I of the municipal land use law. It's also, um, proposing a density consistent with the area. Um, and that's consistent with purpose E of the municipal land use law. Um, the property will, will infill development of a currently vacant lot and a two-story home. Consolidate the lots, creating a consistent streetscape that's consistent with the provided visual, um. Streetscape consistent with purpose I of the municipal land use law. Um, so as far as the positive criteria, I believe that, um, the benefits of the proposed po- project would substantially outweigh any of the detriments. Um, and, and with the negative criteria, the granting the requested variances, uh, will not result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. As mentioned, is appropriate, um, infill developments consistent with the scale of the neighborhood. Um, and also likewise, the granting of the deviations will not result in a substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Um, we are consistent with the purposes on for the redevelopment plan, which is to provide for housing. Then, um, ten minute walk from the Journal Square, um, Transportation Center. And we also consistent with several of the redevelopment plan objectives, including, um, consolidating lots and providing for a consistent development. Um, getting into the, um, master plan, we are also consistent with the master plan. We're providing housing, um, new attractive housing for the existing current, um, existing and future residents of the city. Um, so with that, I believe our project meets a, um, positive and negative criteria, and that concludes my testimony.
Great, thank you, Sam.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Uh, any questions, anybody? Okay, thank you, sir. Counsel, anything else?
That concludes our direct testimony. The only other thing I'd like to add is that we've received the engineering comments dated November twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Staff report debated, uh, dated November twenty-third, twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Um, all, all those comments are acceptable to the applicants. And, uh, the lot, the two lots will be consolidated by deed as part of the application as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. Anybody here from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, close the public.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Um, who says this? This is, once again, Tim's.
Planning's in agreement with, uh, the, uh, testimony given by Mr. Bellamy tonight. We feel that the, uh, the variances requested are de minimis and, um. Approve the, um, application as presented. Um, just that the, the, uh. What's in, uh, the staff conditions in my memo are adhered to. And that the engineering comments by Li Shuang Wang are also mitigated and adhered to. Um, that's it.
Okay, and counsel, you okay with, uh, complying with Tim's comments and his staff report?
Yes, yeah, I'm agree.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash zero eight six as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded.
Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Takor. Hi. Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
Council President Waterman.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
All in favor, motion passes with staff conditions.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Joseph, while we have you on.
Yes.
Somebody always leaves disappointed, um.
Yep.
What do you think about, uh, your application on Nevin Street? Are you okay carrying that?
Uh, yeah, if that's the board's recommendation, um, I, I don't, I don't think we have much of a choice. It's ten o'clock at this point and I, I don't expect this board to be going much longer.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we, uh, we had high hopes of, uh, you know, staying a little bit late. And, and moving some of these items. We have two major applications in front of you. And I, I think, to be honest, we only get through one of them tonight.
Understood, um, we consent to carry the application to the, the January fifth date preservation notices.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, we're gonna carry case P one nine dash one seven one. Uh, for a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for sixteen to twenty Nevin Street. To a date certain January fifth, uh, with preservation of notice.
Thank, thank you. You all, happy new year, have a good evening.
Uh, okay, so. Before we call the next application, do we want to go down the list and, uh, look at items to carry?
Okay, you want me to start bringing attorneys?
Yeah, I think, um. What do we have? We have Mr. Paulino.
I just loaded him.
Mr. Shaljun, you have him.
There's Shaljun.
I don't see. Um, oh, there he is, raising his hand.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shaljun, good evening.
Uh, with respect to our application for, uh, thirty Park Lane North. Uh, I would respectfully request that it be adjourned to January fifth with preservation of notice.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaljun. We appreciate it. I apologize we couldn't get to you tonight.
Thank you, I understand.
Okay, so we are gonna call case P two zero dash zero seven nine for a preliminary and final major site plan for thirty Park Lane North. Uh, that's gonna be carried to a date certain January fifth. Uh, counsel, thank you again, enjoy your holidays.
Same to all of you, thank you.
I appreciate hanging in there so long tonight and we didn't get you anywhere. Good night. Okay, Mr. Paulino.
You're muted, sir.
Right.
I always forget that.
That's okay, I apologize, we got one in for you tonight.
Yeah, I know that, thank you so much, I appreciate that. My client just, I, I think, uh, I mean, I think this is gonna get carried. You're gonna do, I take it you're gonna do, uh, the next matter you're doing is, is number thirteen?
Um, the next matter we're doing is fifteen.
That's, well, that's us.
Six, uh, six fifty Grove Street.
We're, yeah, we're doing six fifty Grove Street next.
And that's a, uh, that's a preliminary and final major site plan. And you probably need to cut out, probably by ten thirty, ten thirty-five, wouldn't you?
Yeah, we, um, uh, again, I, I did talk to the board, or I, you know, put the board on notice. That maybe we try and stay a little bit late tonight. I, I don't see us getting. You know, six fifty Grove and your application in there, I think they're, they're equally large in scale. And, and I think they, you know, deserve the time that they deserve.
No question about that.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, okay, I, I, you know, I guess I have to make a field decision here. So, uh, you know, I, I don't, uh. My suspicion is that, uh, any, any preliminary final major site plan is gonna take us, is gonna take you probably with testimony. Is gonna take you probably thirty, forty minutes, maybe forty-five.
And we'll say that six fifty Grove, it's actually just a preliminary major site plan.
Oh, I thought it was a.
Right, and it's as of right, basically. Yeah, no deviations on that one.
So can I hang in just for a little while and see where it goes?
Sure, sure, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I'd like to do.
Yeah, let's, uh, let's see how it goes.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll stop talking now, so we.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, thanks, all right, so let's call case P two zero dash zero nine four is a preliminary. I'm sorry, it's not a major site plan? No, it's not a final.
No, not a final, sorry, I thought.
We're calling a preliminary major site plan for six fifty Grove Street.
Oops, a wrong architect.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Um, as you know, my name is Jim McCann from the Law Office of Connell Foley in Jersey City. I'm here tonight representing the applicant Newport Associates Development Company in connection with, uh, property. Commonly known as six fifty Grove Street, block six one zero one, lot two. It's located in the Jersey Avenue Light Rail Redevelopment Plan. Uh, as Erica said, the agenda is incorrect. Um, the application is actually for a preliminary site plan approval only, that's the relief requested. There are no deviations. Um, we hope to persuade you of that, of course. Uh, there are a couple of minor checklist waivers. Um, as far as housekeeping goes, I think I will check in with counsel now. Um, because even though this is not required to be noticed under the MLUL, we do have, we did notice under Jersey City's notice ordinance. And I did in advance prepare an affidavit of service and publication with attachments. Um, Council Alampi, have you reviewed it, sir?
Good evening, Mr. McCann. Good evening. The affidavit of publication proof of mailing does appear to be in order under the ordinance. And we can mark that as a one for the record, Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, just, this is, this is a site plan application. Um, there are just two notable, um, things about it that I should just mention in a brief inter- introduction. Um, this application intends to take, take advantage of two bonus provisions in the redevelopment plan. One is a rents, residential density bonus, which basically says if the applicant is willing to make a fifty-five hundred dollar per unit. Contribution to an open space fund, it can build units in addition to what is, uh, set forth in the redevelopment plan. I'll explain more of that to, to you in a few moments. Uh, there's also a landscaping bonus that says, um, the applicant can increase lot coverage. Uh, by one percent for every tree that it proposes on site. So the applicant wants to take, uh, uh, advantage of both of those bonuses. Um, we will explain that to you tonight. My team, I have five witnesses. Um, Matthew Knowles from Jezza Robbins is the project civil engineer. John Garing from HLW is the project architect. He will be assisted by Jay Zoo and Mike Tagnell, uh, for their presentation. And then finally Ed Colling, the, the project planner will testify regarding compliance with the redevelopment plan and the two bonuses. As far as presentation materials, the only thing that you're gonna hear from us tonight. Um, are, uh, testimony on plans that are part of this application filed with the planning department. Uh, and, uh, posted on the planning department web portal. Uh, we do have, that's, that's almost everything. There is one exhibit that we prepared, which is not on the web portal, which we may use to show you. How we comply with the landscaping bonus. Um, and having given that brief introduction, I'll call my first witness, which is Matt Knowles. Um, the, uh, project engineer.
Thank you. Yeah, let me just swear you in, okay? Can you raise your right hand?
Yes, sorry.
It was outside the box. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, Matthew Knowles, N E U L S.
Mr. Knowles, good evening, we've qualified you previously, uh, we haven't qualified you in December yet. Is your license current?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
Matt, in preparation for tonight's hearing, you've reviewed the, uh, the Jersey Avenue Light Rail Redevelopment Plan and the JCLDO.
Yes, I have.
And, uh, you've reviewed your plans?
Sure, yes.
And, um, and, uh, the plans that you're gonna testify from tonight or the exhibits are the plans that are filed with the planning department, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, would you take us through the site, please?
Sure.
Pull up your exhibits.
There we go, oh, this button. Okay, are you able to see that screen?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, good. All right, so, uh, this is just the cover sheet. Again, I'll be speaking from the plans that have been submitted, so no, no change there. Uh, we'll zoom into this aerial image here just to give everyone a, uh, quick, quick background on where the site is located. It's actually in the south side of Eighteenth Street. And it runs all the way from Maran Boulevard to Grove Street, it's sort of one long block, I'm along the south side of Eighteenth Street there. Uh, it's, it's diagonally northeastern where, uh, the lack of warehouses for, you know, in terms of, uh, in terms of a landmark in that area. And, you know, just south of the main railroad lines coming into the Hoboken Terminal. Uh, that's the location of the site, basically. And, uh. I think that, that's some basic information about that, should I, should I flip to the site plan drawing?
Yes, please, Matt.
Okay, I'm gonna flip to the sheet two, which is the, uh, the site plan drawing, uh, which is sheet C three I one in the plan set. Uh, again, the property along the south side of Eighteenth Street consists of about zero point nine acres, just under one acre of land. Um, located in Jersey Avenue Light Rail Redevelopment Plan, as noted earlier. Uh, we're proposing a building here that's a, it's a long, um, a, 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 a longer narrow. We're building along, alongside of Eighteenth Street here. Hundred and eighty residential units, uh, two levels of parking for a total of eighty parking spaces. And, um, basically along, along the street front edge will have, uh, some street trees. And, uh, and, and sidewalks and then street lighting, basically. Um, and, uh, I guess one other, one other thing to, to quickly note. We'll have a stormwater detention basin inside the building under the ramp going up, uh, to the second level of parking. And that'll connect into utilities in Eighteenth Street as well, sanitary sewer, uh, and water will also connect into the utilities in Eighteenth Street. I think that's a quick overview as I can, as I can give.
Matt, did you show the access points, uh, I'm sorry, the residential lobby versus commercial?
That's right, uh, let me do that now. So the resident, the residential lobby will be located here at the, uh, northwest corner of the site. Uh, there's a series of sta- uh, of steps and ramps to access that. Because the floor of the building is gonna be several feet above the existing grade. And that's due to the fact that we're in a flood hazard area, we have to elevate the lobby to one foot above the base flood elevation, based on the, the state's, uh, flood hazard rules. The, um, the office lobby, there's, there's an office, uh, use in the building, that lobby is actually located here. Okay, maybe a third of the way.
Commissioners, there's approximately thirty-five thousand square feet of office space as part of this project, in addition to the residential. So it's a mixed-use project, I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, yeah, so the office lobby is located along the same sort of prominent area in the front, but there'll be, there'll be steps and, uh, as well to, to access that. Thank you. Yeah, so the office lobby is located along the same sort of prominent area in the front, but there'll be, there'll be steps and, uh, as well to, to access that lobby. And then, uh, vehicles will enter the parking facility right in the middle of the front edge along Eighteenth Street. They'll have, uh, an, an entrance driveway there. Uh, and then driveway will also, in addition to accessing the two levels of parking spaces, it will also access. Uh, a small area for loading and also, uh, the, the refuse inside the building. That's basically, again, that's, that's pretty much a.
And as you can see from the plan in front of you, commissioners, the building itself is ten stories high, that the parking garage is two stories high. Matt, just real quick to introduce the, the density bonus to the commissioners. Um, under the redevelopment plan, this is in the high-rise district, correct?
It is.
So, uh, under the plan, you're allowed ninety units per acre, correct?
That's, that's the base density, correct?
And the residential density bonus allows you up to a hundred and twenty units per acre, correct?
That's right.
So, based upon the fact that our site is zero point nine oh eight acres. We get eighty-one units on the base density and another twenty-seven units on the bonus density. In exchange for the contribution per unit, correct?
That's right.
All right, so it's a hundred and eight units.
Brings us to a hundred and eight units with the two.
And as far as the landscape bonus goes, it's the lot coverage, um, in the, in the high-rise district is seventy-five percent, correct?
That's right.
But for every tree you plant on site, you're allowed to go up one percent, correct?
That's right. So we.
Go ahead.
Yep, so we, so we needed, you know, we're proposing a little over seventy-six percent coverage. So technically, we would need two trees on site. We're showing eleven trees on site right now because we have the space for those.
Okay.
So all, all accessible will be required to get that bonus.
And then as far as the rest of the zoning chart goes, your review of the architects' plans and your own plans, we're in compliance with. Height, parking, front side, rear yard setbacks, and FAR, correct?
That's correct. Well, correct.
So according to the zoning chart, this plan fully complies with the redevelopment plan.
That's right.
No further questions of Mr. Knowles, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Knowles, no questions from me. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, my next, next witness is Mr. John Garing from HLW.
Hi, John, let me just swear you in, all right?
Sure.
Is your hand up over there? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
John Gearing, G-E-R-I-N-G.
Mr. Gearing, good evening. Uh, you are testifying tonight, or you are?
I, I am testifying and, uh, two of my associates are testifying with me.
Okay, and we've qualified you in the past. Uh, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
And John, just one other thing. In addition to your architectural license, you, you also have a landscape license. In landscape architect license in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Landscape is covered on the architecture.
Okay.
And that's how it's been filed. That's typically how we do that.
Okay, and that, and so that license would be part of it. It's current also, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, and, and John, you're familiar with the, uh, Jersey Avenue Light Rail redevelopment plan and the JCLDO? You've reviewed them? And, um, the plans that you're gonna present to the board tonight and that your associates are gonna present are. Uh, the plans that were filed with the board as part of this application?
Yes, they are.
And maybe there's some colorization, but they're basically the same plans, correct? Okay. Um, and your two associates are, uh, Jay Zoo and Michael Tagnell. And at, when we get to that point, you are gonna authorize them to testify on your behalf under your license, correct?
That's correct.
All right, go ahead, John. Uh, take us through the exterior of the building, please.
Uh, so what you're looking at, um, is a rendering of the prospective, uh, new building that we're looking at. And to provide you s- with some context, uh, at the right side of the rendering, uh, we have Grove Street. At the left side of the rendering, we have Maran Boulevard, and the front of the building is placed along Eighteenth Street. Um, as mentioned earlier, the building is ten stories in height, uh, with a total height of a hundred and ten feet, uh, which is within the maximum zoning allowance. Uh, the building is a little over a hundred fifty-eight thousand square feet in total. Uh, this building is predominantly residential. However, the building is divided into two components vertically. Uh, the first is the base. Uh, the base includes two floors. Uh, it's predominantly parking. Uh, there is a total of eighty spaces over those two levels. Additionally, there are some building support functions for mechanical infrastructure, a building office. And we've identified bicycle storage as required by, by the zoning ordinance. Above the base, uh, from floors three to four, there are two floors of office space. And moving vertically from floors five through ten, there are six floors of residential units. Totalling the one hundred eight units defined earlier. Now, in terms of the exterior and the overall aesthetic, uh, the facade is designed to respond. To the context of the surrounding areas, specifically the Lacoona, uh, warehouse, uh, which is diagonally across the street. Uh, that building has a series of very strong vertical elements in it. As well of, as well, well as strong horizontal elements, uh, which provided some, uh, interest for us in terms of. What we would do with our building. So taking the cue from the surrounding buildings. Our proposed design incorporates an exterior aesthetic. Uh, that includes a series of layered planes, all intertwined together to establish the overall facade. So let me walk you through that. The first plane is what I call the primary layer. Uh, that's a series of vertical brick piers that are anchored at the ground level with a continuous concrete plinth. Along the base. Then there's a secondary la- layer, uh, which includes the horizontal brick spanul panels. And these spanul panels are located at each floor level. And then there's a third layer, which is a recessed layer, uh, which is at the parapet level at the top. And also at the right side of the building where the building turns the corners. You know, all of this providing an interesting collage of materials, uh, that provide a lot of shadow and depth. Uh, which provides a significant interest to the facade versus using a flat brick, uh, facade. So let me talk a little bit about color. Uh, we've selected two colors for the brick. Uh, the first primary color, uh, is at the columns and at the horizontal spanul panels. Uh, if you look at the legend on, on the bottom, the second color from the left is the, uh, light brown brick. It's actually called a red varitone brick. And then we looked at the, uh, entry points, um, which is at the office in this, in the center. Uh, of the building, and we looked at the, uh, residential entrance, which is at the right. Um, that brick is a darker brown brick depicting those zones in terms of the entry portals. And that brick is called, uh, teal brown. Now, in addition to the brick material, uh, we've introduced some metals as well. Uh, there are two colors of the metal. Uh, the first is a light gray as defined in the legend, uh, below. It's the fourth color in from the left. That light gray metal is used in all the windows and all facades. And then we introduced a darker color, gray, which is shown on the fifth sample from the left. And that gray is located at the canopies at the office entry at the middle of the building. And the canopy at the residential entrance at the right of the building. Additionally, from the center of the building left on the first two floors. We've introduced a series of louvers that are incorporated into the facade. To provide adequate natural ventilation into the parking garage. Um, and those louvers are a dark gray metal as well. Thereby, you know, p- providing, uh, an, an, an array of, uh, you know, depth. And, and, and color for the brick and accessing it with some metals along the way. So now that we've talked about the outside, we'd like to walk you through the interior of the building and identify, uh, each particular floor. And the differences between that, and I'm gonna turn it over to my partner, uh, Mr. Zoo.
Thank you very much, John.
Hi, Mr. Zoo, I just need to swear you in, okay?
Absolutely.
Can you raise your hand? Do you swear any testimony you give today is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And, uh, for the record, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Jay Zhu, first name is J-I-E, last name is Z-H-U.
Mr. Zhu, good evening. Uh, Mr. McCann stated on record before. I just wanna confirm you'll be testifying under Mr. Gearing's license tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much, uh, commissioners. So Matt, uh, can we flip to the next slide, please? Thank you very much. So, uh, you know, for the next couple of slides, I'm just gonna do a quick walkthrough. Of the, uh, of the plan of the building. Um, if we focus on drawing A O one, drawing number one, which is a drawing on the bottom. Uh, we will start to, uh, walk you through, uh, the building entrances, as Matt has mentioned. Is located at the corner of Grove Street and Eighteenth Street. And as Matt also mentioned, because of the site is located in a relatively low, um, um, elevation. The building lobby is elevated, uh, above from the sidewalk. And, um, we wanted to treat that height differences by a series of terrace. That with landscape to help to mitigate sort of the change of grade and make it more welcoming. Uh, you can see here, there are really two sets of steps that gets the visitors and tenants up to the elevation twelve. Uh, which is that area. Um, from that area, there are, uh, really two entrances, one going into the residential lobby on the left. And one going into the office lobby to the right. And the reason that we're setting that facade back is to further allow, you know, better connection between the street. And, uh, you know, and the building, you know, to give it sort of more openness and a connection. And from that point on, uh, on the rest of the ground floor, we have, um, identified a series of support spaces. In terms of mechanical rooms and refuse rooms that is located on the lower left corner of the residential building. With the two elevator or left, to, to the left of the two elevators. And, um, and there will be another separate elevator that serves the office building. And between the two elevators, uh, the two functions share the same loading area. Which is, which is going to be accessed from, um, the middle of Eighteenth Street, as Matt has testified. Uh, which is really the, uh, the vehicle access to the building. The rest of the building is mostly parking. Uh, as John and Matt mentioned, overall, there are eighty parking spaces, uh, which is above the minimum required parking spaces. For the site and below the maximum allowable parking spaces for the site. And we have identified four eighty-eight parking spaces, two will be located on the ground floor. And two will be located on the second floor, so they're evenly distributed. As you can see here, there's a speed ramp that gets us to the second floor, and again, on the second floor, there are the rest of the, um. The rest of the eighty parking spaces there. Um, you would, uh, also see on the upper left corner of the second floor plan. We have identified, uh, amenity space for the residential use there. Um, so that part will be, um, access from the elevators, um, for the residential units. Thank you. So moving up to the typical office floor. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. Uh, Matt, would you mind to go to drawing, I believe drawing number one, which is the one below? Thank you. So it's a very. Thank you. So it's, it's a very straightforward office layout. As you can see here, there is a one office elevator that gets us to this floor. The office use will share two egress stairs, uh, that is located at the opposite end of this floor plate. The office will also, um, have a view of the roof that is just above the two-story parking garage. That roof will be a green roof. And, uh, moving up to the typical residential. Again, the typical residential floor starts from floor five and goes up to the top of the building, which is floor ten. There are overall six levels of the residential, um, portion of the building. Each floor has twelve units. And the distribution of the unit types is, um, is, is very uniform. We have, um. Uh, eighteen units per floor. There will be two studio, nine one-bedroom, five two-bedrooms and. And two three-bedrooms, very evenly distributed, um, very spacious, um, unit layout for that.
Commissioners, you, you may notice that the, the rooms are not laid out because this is a preliminary site plan. We haven't laid the rooms out yet. And, um, we've requested a checklist waiver, uh, from the plant, from planning, uh. So that, w- when we do our final site plan, we will lay out the rooms as you're used to seeing, but because it's a preliminary. Haven't done it yet, checklist waiver requested. Go ahead, Jay.
Thank you very much, Jim. Um, so that's really pretty much the, the typical residential floor. Um, on the next page, Matt, if you go to the next page. So here are really the roof plan of the, uh, of the overall building. Uh, we do have an accessible roof. Uh, Matt, if you don't mind, just slide down to the, uh, to the plan below. That shows an elevator lobby that has an access to this floor. And later on, um, on the landscape drawing, you will see a, a roof deck that is landscape. That will be accessible to the residential tenants on the buil- to the building.
Uh, commissioners, another checklist waiver requested is, uh, more detail on the, uh. On the mechanicals on the rooftop, again, preliminary site plan, so we don't have all the detail you might normally see. Um, so that's another checklist waiver we're requesting. Uh, thank you, Jay. Zach, is that, are you done, Jay?
Thank you. There are just a couple of more elevation sheets that we can breathe through very quickly.
Very quickly.
Yes. Um, on the elevation sheets, as John has mentioned before, um, the building height complies. So this is really just the overall, uh, drawing that shows what John has just presented in the color rendering. Um, uh, I do wanna point out that the building has a very consistent exterior. So all four sides of the building are very consistent in terms of material used, uh, and the rhythm that is being provided. So with that, I think we can flip on to, um. The next page, which is again, the south side and the west side and the east side of the elevation. Next page, please. Here's a building section that shows the program, program, uh, stacking with, uh, building lobby. And support space on the ground floor, garage, first and second, office, three and four, and residential above. And, uh, the last sheet, uh, that I will talk about is the detail sheet. And again, to echo John's point, we wanted to provide a very sculpted facade. So there's, um, you know, as John has mentioned, there are a lot of articulations in terms of, uh, the different planes and the different depths. So that we want to really echo what has been a very prevalent in the neighborhood, which is a very, um, regular warehouse kind of look. We're also introducing a little bit of a concrete, uh, language to that, to also blend in. Uh, represented by, uh, sills and, you know, header lines. We've have also shown that on the base of the building, the, um, the canopy and storefronts. As well as building signages that, uh, comply with the maximum amount of signage allowed for each use. And with that, I would turn it over back to you, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Or done with the building, commissioners, um, we'd like to move to the, just the landscaping, uh, component.
Sure, I just, I do have one quick question.
Sure.
We're not talking about rooftop mechanicals tonight. Are there gonna be PTAC units in the windows?
Yes, yes, the, the, as we're showing here on the typical elevate, elevation, um, the residential portion will have PTAC units.
Okay, how about the commercial? The commercial is gonna be, uh.
The commercial will have a central air system that won't have the PTAC on it.
Okay, the, the reason I ask, you know, we're butted right up to those light rail tracks there, so. You know, I don't think mechanicals on the roof are, are as big of an issue as they usually would be with screening. And, you know, just the size of the units, so. I'd like to see no PTAC units, but, uh, you know. We'll move on.
We could take that under consideration because we still have to come back for a final site. We could take that under consideration because we still have to come back for a final site plan, Chairman, so.
I, I would hope, but you know, I understand. I understand the cost involved, so. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Um, next witness is Michael Tagnell.
Hi, Michael. Let me just swear you in, okay?
Okay.
You raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Uh, my name's Michael Tagnell, M I C H A E L. Tagnell's T E G N E L L. And Mr. Tagnell, you, uh, as well as Mr. Zhu are testifying under Mr. Gearing's license tonight, correct? That's correct. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. So can you go next? So we would like to go through the, the landscape that we're doing. We, we have three different levels that we're gonna be looking at. Uh, one is the ground level. We'll get to the third floor terrace and we'll get to the roof terrace. So that's the overall scope of the landscape. And at the ground floor, um, we've managed to have a, a pretty lush uh, landscape despite the fact that the building occupies almost the entire site. Uh, so what we've done along Eighteenth Street uh, is to try to frame the, the entrance to the building with trees on either side. We're also emphasizing the entrance to the garage, uh, with the location of the trees. And again, along Eighteenth Street, we have a line of, of trees that are set within our property line. Uh, because we felt that, yeah, the sidewalk of Eighteenth Street is, is pretty narrow. So where we can, uh, you know, add trees and still maintain a generous sidewalk or a normal sidewalk, uh, we chose to do that. The, the, the planting itself, uh, we're trying to uh, locate the trees on the rhythm of the building, so it's per base or roughly about thirty feet, uh, in the spacing. And then we, again, we, the understory planting is, is a rhythm of different uh, uh, ground covers and, and shrubbery among the front. So there is a consistency and a rationale to the, the entire frontage of the building. On, on Grove Street, we again have, uh, a row of trees there against the building and on, on Marin, where we have a little bit more room, we've introduced, uh, two, uh, trees along there to create a little alley. And I think it's a, a nice, uh, little grove of trees would be on Marin Street. In the rear, uh, we just have seasonal, uh, grasses in the back. So that's kind of it for, uh, the ground plane. So if you go to the next slide, just to, uh, just so everybody understands the, the quantities of trees and how we've allocated all those. The, uh, along Eighteenth Street where it's sort of a, a pinkish haze over the trees, those are all on our property. There are eleven trees. Those to back up, we have twenty-four trees in total. And so we've allocated those by eleven trees that are on our property. Two of those will be used for the bonus. And we need, based upon the requirements for the forestry, we need twenty-two trees. Uh, we need one tree for every twenty-five feet of frontage. There are about, it's five hundred and fifty linear feet of frontage, so we need twenty-two trees. So we have nine trees on Marin, we have four trees on, on Grove. And then we're allocating nine trees, uh, of the, of, along Eighteenth Street to give us twenty-two trees. So we are in compliance with all the tree requirements. And in fact, there's a bit of a bonus there, too.
Commissioners, this exhibit, I'm sorry, Michael, just one second. This exhibit, um, is actually a plan that's been colorized, but it was not put on the web portal. We thought we would present it, um, because it explains to you how we comply with forestry standards as well as the bonus. So I'm not sure. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay. So I think you can go to the next slide, uh, which is just to show you the, the terrace on the third floor. It's, it's going to be a, uh, the cedum tray green roof. Uh, it'll be accessible, but it's not meant as a, uh, a place of assembly. It's, it's purely for viewing and, uh, to, to mitigate any stormwater issues that we have. Uh, so it's pretty straightforward. It's just, just a, uh, cedum trays. If you go to the roof, next slide. This is the amenities, uh, roof for, for the building. And, uh, it's, it's completely landscaped. We will offer, uh, barbecue area, dining area. We will have, uh, chase lounge areas and then we will wrap this with, uh, s- smaller, uh, flowering trees around the perimeter of this. And we have two means of egress, so. So that's, that's kind of it.
Any questions, commissioners, about the landscaping program?
Um, that third floor, um, outdoor space, uh, that's accessible to the office space, I believe, correct?
Well, it'd be a door out. I mean, it's not something, we're not encouraging people to go out there.
Looks like a perfect smoke.
It's really a maintenance.
Not that I smoke, um. Okay, uh, commissioners, any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Tegnell.
Final witness, Ed Colling.
Sure.
Hi, Ed. Let me just swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you're gonna give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
My first name is Edward. Last name is Colling, K O L L I N G.
Mr. Colling, good evening. Um, I welcome the day when your license isn't current anymore. It, it, is it still current?
Yes, yeah, yes, it is. And, and that day is, is coming.
Well, I hope you join in and tell us your license isn't current anymore. I, I would really enjoy that day. Um, go ahead, you're qualified.
Okay. Ed, you've, you've reviewed the redevelopment plan to prepare for tonight's testimony?
Oh, yes, I have.
As well as the L D O?
Yes.
And the forestry standards?
Yes, yes.
And, and you've reviewed all the plans that were filed in connection with this application as well as the ones that are being presented tonight for the board?
I, I certainly have.
All right. Can you tell us a little bit about redevelopment compliance and the two bonuses?
Right. I'm gonna mostly go to the bonuses because I think you've heard the testimony of both the architect and the engineer. They pointed out how we meet all the, the bulk standards, the height standards, the floor area ratios, et cetera. And we meet the density requirements, but the density has the extra component of the bonus. This property is just under an acre. It's zero point nine oh eight acres. And the base density is ninety units an acre, which calculates out to eighty-one point seven two units, around down to eighty-one. And then there's a section within the redevelopment plan, section seven, which is the residential bonus provisions. And this provision, as it's stated right in the redevelopment plan, is applicable to all residential development and permits the construction of up to thirty additional units per acre. So in our case, because we have the point nine oh eight, we, we would qualify for twenty-seven point two four additional units. So that's how we arrived at the one hundred and eight. So with the, the bonus provision does apply to our development because it applies to all residential development. Um, and there's a monetary contribution to open space fund, which is due and payable uh, prior to the pulling of the first building permit. So that's when it will occur. Uh, the other bonus that we're using has to do with additional, uh, coverage, building coverage. And we're permitted seventy-five percent. And we are slightly over that. We're seventy-six point six, I think, is seventy-six point four percent. So in order to get the extra one point four percent, you get one percent for every additional trade that you plant on site, which is, which would, and so we designated two trees for that purpose. Uh, as our landscape architect has described and has shown on this, this exhibit here that's outlined in, in red. And just to be, you know, careful and to be conservative, we did the calculations for the forestry standards and it was pointed out, it's one tree for every twenty-five feet, which calculates out to the twenty-two trees, therefore the additional two trees that are, that are left, uh, are, are applied to the bonus. So we were able to comply both with the forestry standards in terms of number of trees as well as the, um, uh, the number of trees necessary for the bonus. So we get the additional little over one and a half or about one and a half percent, uh, coverage. And I think it all works together very well. Um, the plan is an integrated landscape plan, provides the trees a, along Eighteenth Street, both other side streets being Grove and Marin and, and the different types of, uh, grasses and, and things that are provided i- in the rear, I think really complements the building very well. So we, we conform with just the, with the basic standards of the redevelopment plan in terms of bulk, height, density, floor area ratio. And we also comply with the two bonus components that we've taken advantage of.
Thank you, Ed. That's the end of our presentation, uh, commissioners, um, unless there are any questions.
Um, the only question I have, I guess, uh, Mr. McCann, you could probably handle it. Is there, there any movement on the light rail stop that was proposed back there?
I do not have any information in connection with that, Chairman.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Council. Anything else?
Uh, I can just add one thing to speed this up a little bit. We did receive, uh, engineering comments from the Jersey City Division, Division of Engineering. If you see them, it does look like there are a lot of them. That's really because this is a preliminary site plan, uh, and not a final. Um, but we will stipulate that we will, uh, work with the Jersey City Engineering, uh, Department, uh, to resolve their comments of their eleven-twenty, uh, memorandum and consult with the staff if necessary to do that.
Sure. And, um, you know, obviously we'll, we'll see how it goes on the final site plan with engineering.
Sure.
Okay, uh, thank you, Council. Uh, so at this time, is anybody here from public that wants to comment? Please raise your hand if you're calling in. You can press star nine to raise your hand.
I see a raised hand there.
Sure.
Hi, Catherine.
Hi.
All right.
Okay.
Um, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Catherine Moore, K A T H R Y N M O O R E.
Ms. Moore, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Uh, real quick, um, just because this is something that's been happening in our neighborhood. Um, what is the plan with, uh, on-street, um, parking and or loading and unloading of delivery trucks and whatnot, Eighteenth Streets and Grove and, and all those are quite busy and currently have no parking on them at all.
Absolutely.
Is that something that's gonna be brought up? Um, I just wanted to bring it up because it's a, it's a big issue of double park, double parking in our neighborhood.
Absolutely. Mr. McCann, do you want to, uh?
And then, and that's all I have a question about. That is, that's it.
Okay.
Sure. I, I think I, I could ask probably Matt. Matt, can you go back to your site plan? I think you had the, showed the loading area inside the building.
Yes.
But do you think, you know, stuff, you know, the, the, uh, seamless is gonna pull into that building? Into that space to, to, to drop off some food?
You know, that's, that's the question that, that we always have. Are, are Ubers gonna be directed in there? You know, we'd like to say yes, but how do we ensure that?
Yeah, I, I mean, we can't really say yes to Uber's going in and out of the parking garage because it's a, it's a secured parking garage for the residents, um.
I think that's something we'd have to, we'd have to work out with engineering when we got to a final site plan because I don't know exactly what.
Yeah, and, and you know, everything's kind of gone a little, uh, with all the bike lanes and everything like that when you cross over closer to the waterfront. So, you know, is the city's plan to continue that kind of, um, traffic pattern where you actually do have parking on that road?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I guess I don't have any final information on that, you know, even some of the bike lanes we've, we've run into with, with prior projects where they kind of came surprisingly and we had to deal with them later, but I guess I would suggest that wh- whatever the case may be, when we go for a final site plan, we'll have to accommodate, you know, whether accommodate perhaps a, uh, a drop-off lane as well as the bike lane and the, uh, and the travel lanes. And then we'd have to work that out with the engineering division.
Okay. Just wanted to bring it up, but it's preliminary, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
And enjoy your holiday.
I will.
Um, yeah, as far as, a- as far as the bike lanes go, I mean, Eighteenth Street is, is vital for moving people from the heights downtown. If, if you're in the heights going to the waterfront on a bike, i- it's, you know, it's a major route. Anyway, um, anybody else from public want to comment? And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody else?
In the public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Uh, I think this is what Erica's, right?
Yes, it's mine.
Okay.
I just wanted.
Thing to, to wrap up with.
I don't really have anything else to add. I provided a staff report to the, um, uh, attorney, applicant's attorney, and it's dated December third. Just want to ensure that, uh, those standard conditions are acceptable.
Um, they are with, with, if we can make one change to item number three. Um, Erica, you say all street trees and landscaping shall be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. I'd like to add the word temporary certificate of occupancy. And here's the reason why. I, I've come across pro, uh, situations where a developer goes to get a C O in January or February. You can't really install the landscaping at that time. Um, so I've had problems getting C Os for projects because of that. And, and it, it really makes sense. If you install the trees in January or February, they're gonna die. So if we could change that to say temporary, then my client could at least get a temporary C O so that they can start to rent up the building. And then sometime in the springtime, go for a final C O after the landscaping is in. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And I know it's a preliminary site plan, but I tend to find out that if I agree to this stuff at preliminary, it's harder to undo it at final, so.
Well, that's by design.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I'd like to undo it a little bit at preliminary, if I might. I think that's a reasonable request.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with that either. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Erica?
No, nothing else.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to approve case, uh, P two zero, guys.
I'm sorry, I may have misspoke. What I meant is install the landscaping prior to a final C O so that they can get a temporary.
I thought we.
Sorry. It's getting a little late here, but prior to the issuance of a final C O is what I'm looking for.
That's okay, Erica. We're good?
I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero, that zero nine four is presented to the board here tonight.
Second it. Motion made and seconded.
Okay, Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Uh, sorry, uh, Commissioner DeCor.
Aye.
Commissioner. Who else? Uh, Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Did decide leave? Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye. Um, yeah, I, I look forward to the office space. I, I think that's needed in the neighborhood.
I think you even missed me.
Oh, Commissioner Horton, I apologize.
Anyway, I'm an I. Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Chairman.
No worries, no worries.
Okay, so Commissioner Horton, that was an I.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. What conditions?
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Uh, Commissioners, thank you for staying up late and hearing us way past 10 o'clock. Greatly appreciate it. Wish you all a happy holiday. Thank you.
Counsel, you too. Okay, so we have one more. We're certainly not going to get through all of it. Um, I'll, I'll call the case and we'll, we'll bring up, you know, Mr. Pallino and see, uh, how far we can get into it, if he wants to get into it at all, but let's call the case, uh, P20-098. It's a preliminary and final major site plan with C variants for 415 to 435 Summit Avenue.
You're muted again, Mr. Pallino. You're still muted.
Oh, I know, I know.
You're rubbing it in now.
I know, I know.
So, may I ask a question? Uh, I, I, there's just, uh, given your, your schedule there, it is, uh, I mean, I, I could go fast, but I'm not going to go fa- I'm not going to do it in nine minutes.
No, of course not. Um.
So, uh, uh, I would like to be early in the, uh, in the, I guess, the next meeting, the January 5th meeting. If you can do that procedurally by my starting, then I could just give you an introduction and we could stop there. Uh, or we could, but I, but, but I'm hesitant to do that because, you know, it is a month from now and, uh, uh, my words are not going to be golden, but I don't want you to, I don't want you to forget them.
No, I, I agree. I hesitate to, you know, even take any testimony. Um, you know, just to get you on record and to, to open it up now. Hopefully helps, helps your client. I don't know. I don't know how.
I suppose that if you just call the case, that calling the case should be enough. Mr. Lampy, what do you think about that? Would that, would that, uh, would that change my position on the agenda?
And your location on the agenda?
Yes, my location.
I think that if we open it up and we allow Mr., you know, we qualify the notice, allow Mr. Pallino some opening remarks. Mr. Pallino then will fall under the old business category on the January 5th agenda. You know, and he would be first before we go into the new business, so.
Well, I can, I can do that. My remarks won't be long.
Well, and I tend to agree with you, counsel, that you may not want to begin testimony for 10, 15, 20 minutes, whatever it may be. If we're going to have to rehash all of that in January to refresh everyone's memory.
That's, that's a pretty good move there, counsel. Staying up late and just opening the thing and you go first next time. Um, we, we do have a few administrative, uh, things that we're probably going to put ahead of you. But, uh, sure, we can get you in under old business. But, uh, just for the record, 10 Journal Square will not be under old business.
I know, but that, that's high up too, and, uh, I'm on both of them.
We haven't, I haven't signed off on that agenda yet.
Yeah, of course.
We'll see what happens.
Of course.
Um, okay, so let's, uh, you know, I've called the case. Let's, uh, check the notice and, and if you want to make some opening remarks and we'll carry on with our year.
I think what we should do is call the case. Check my notices and then I'll, I'll do my opening remarks on the 5th.
Okay, great. So I've already called the case. Uh, let's check the notice.
Mr. Lampy, I submitted, uh, notices to you.
You did, and, uh, thank you, counsel. For the record, I've received the affidavit of the publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 415 to 435 Summit Avenue here in the city. They do appear to be in order, so we're going to mark those as A1 for the record. Jurisdiction is before the board. Mr. Pallino, if you could place your appearance on the record. And then provide.
My name is Eugene, uh, T. Pallino. I'm with the firm of Genova Burns and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, TRG Summit, uh, and SIP LLC.
Anything else, counsel?
Um, no, that's enough. I, I think that's it.
The best thing I've heard all night. Um. Okay, so, uh, could I get a motion to carry?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, carry, uh, case P20-098 uh, to a day certain of January 5th with preservation of notice. You've opened it up.
Mr. Chair, just before we do that, I note that the agenda indicates that there's 200 bicycle spaces. But it looked to me like we could get maybe 260 in there.
That would make for.
This council wants to look at that over the holiday.
It'll be a good Christmas present.
Uh, atheist.
I know.
Uh, no, we would appreciate that. I would appreciate that, but, uh, you know, we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your, uh, your, your in me. As little as I've spoken this afternoon, this evening.
But at least I got one. Tremendously, counsel.
So we have the motion to carry. Did we get a second?
Second.
There he is. Okay, so, uh, can I get a roll call to carry?
Okay. Uh, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Decore.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Uh, Councilman Gangadin.
Councilman.
I mean, sorry.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi.
Okay, and Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Enjoy your new year and your holidays.
Happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you.
Please make it safe.
Do we need to carry the, uh, Powerhouse Arts District redevelopment plan? We didn't even, uh, bring that up tonight.
Yeah, we can carry that.
Okay, so, uh, I'm, I'll entertain a motion to carry the review and discussion of amendments to the Powerhouse Arts District redevelopment plan regarding the permitting office and medical office uses on the ground floor and permit office use in the excess of 10% of gross floor area. This has been petitioned by K321 Washington Properties LLC. Uh, formal action may be taken, but not this year.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second, David Cruz?
Second.
Uh, Vidya beat ya. Um, okay, could I have a roll call to carry that one?
Okay, uh, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Decore.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, I don't know, do we want to double check my math? I think we covered everything as far as carrying tonight.
I think we did, Chairman.
Okay, so.
30 Park Lane North.
Uh, we did have, uh, Mr. Shalgen.
Right, yeah, we did.
And agree to that. Okay, I think we covered everything. So let's move on to memorialization of resolutions.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we have 17 today with, uh, one from today. Uh, so make a, like, make a move into approve, um, I'm sorry, memorialize the following resolutions.
Orlando, we, we have two from today, I believe, correct?
Um, well, we had two that were added from by Erica late, and then I've got the one that we added today.
I, uh, I sent an email. I don't know, sometimes you're in a meeting with all of them. I think it's 20 resolutions.
Okay, do we have 253 Academy on there or no?
We do. We do. Uh, I think from my original email, I sent an additional.
The four additions, I believe, are 253 Academy, 175 Academy. And then 55 Washburn. And 37 Bright Street.
I don't have Washburn and Bright Street, but it's all right. You just sent that to me, Erica?
Yeah, I sent that, um.
As if, yeah, that's the thing. I don't really check my email during the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, no worries.
Doctor, let me just fill you and the board in on the 55 Washburn. That was the extension with the pro se uh, applicant from the November meeting. The applicant wanted the one-year extension primarily based on the fact that the pandemic was happening and the board granted that one-year extension of the eight-unit building site plan approval. The 37 Bright Street was another pro se applicant at 37 Bright Street. Uh, that was the applicant, Ms. Burton, I believe, was the applicant's name. And the applicant was proposing the art gallery with the residential unit on the top floor. They needed the deviation for the step-back roof appurtenance. I prepared both of those resolutions on behalf of the board and those are in the package.
Perfect, yep. I have them all now, so I'm ready.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion and to memorialize the following resolutions. Uh, first resolution is applicant 181-189 Academy LLC for extension of minor subdivision approval with C variances. Address at 175-185 Academy Street, block 12308, lots nine, 10, uh, and 11. Case number on that was P20-147. Uh, next, uh, resolution is applicant 26 Van Reipen LLC for final major site plan amendment and approval with a deviation. Address at 24-32 Van Reipen Avenue, block 7903, lots 39 and 38 dot 01, formerly lots 38 and 39. Case number on that was P20-120. Third resolution is applicant 49 Fisk Property Owner LLC for preliminary and final major site plan with C variances, address 49 Fisk Street, block 22103, lot 1, case number P20-111. Fourth resolution is approval and, uh, the City of Jersey City recommending approval and adoption to city council the proposed amendments to the Exchange Place North redevelopment plan. Uh, resolution number five is a corrective resolution, uh, applicant 829 Garfield Holdings LP for preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations. Address at 829-843 Garfield Avenue, block 22704, lot 7 dot 01. Formerly known as lots 7, 8, and 9. Case number on that was P20-051. Resolution number six is, uh, the Jersey City recommending approval and adoption to city council the proposed amendments to the Water Street redevelopment plan. Seventh resolution is for site plan amendment applicant JC Capital Fund MLK LLC. Address at 168-172 Martin Luther King Drive, Jersey City, New Jersey. Block 25001, lot 67. Case number P20-012. Resolution number eight for preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk variance relief. Uh, applicant Black Iron Journal Square LLC, address 810 Pavonia Avenue. Block 9404, lot 33. Case number P20-089. Resolution number nine, GND Witten Street, uh, Holdings Urban Renewal LLC for administrative amendments to final major site plan approval. Address at 412 418 Wyton Witten Street, block 17505, lot 17 and 18. Case number P20-100. Resolution number 10 for minor site plan and C variances. Applicant, uh, Ram Kumar Ruknareen, uh, address LLC Stegwin Street. Block 25002, lot 38. Case number P19-162. Resolution number 11 is, um, the City of Jersey City recommending amendments to the land development ordinance to adopt an updated stormwater control ordinance to city council of the City of Jersey City. Resolution number 12 is, uh, the Jersey City recommending, uh, City of Jersey City recommending the adoption and approval to city council and amendment to the block 13102 redevelopment plan. Resolution number 13, the City of Jersey City, applicant Liberty Storage LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval with a design waiver and deviations. Address at 302 Morris Pessin Drive, block 24304, lot 7. Case number on that was P19-182. Resolution number 14 is for a minor site plan approval. Applicant 145 Bergen LLC, address at 145 Bergen Avenue. Block 23001, lot 36. Case number P20-104. Resolution number 15, uh, applicant Moxie Holdings LLC for administrative amendment approval. And two, uh, year extension of the preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances at 253 Academy Street and 101 Tours Avenue. Block 13402, lots 22 and 23. Case number P20-151. Resolution number 16, applicant TRG Academy LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval. Address at 177 Academy Street, formerly known as 175-177 Academy Street. And a portion of 181 Academy Street. Block 12308, lot, uh, 11 dot 01. Formerly known as lot 12 and a portion of lot 10. Case number is P20-003. Resolution number 17 for preliminary final major site plan with deviations. Applicant 72 Holly Road LLC. Address is 785 Newark Ave, block 9402, lot 3. Case number P20-066. Resolution number 18 is for major preliminary final, final site plan with variance. Address 37 Bright Street. Applicant Carolyn, uh, Kay Burton. Case number on that was P19-174. Uh, resolution number 19 is applicant MC Maple Holding LLC for administrative amendment. Address at 74, uh, Maple Street, formerly known as 72-74 Maple Street. 268 Pine Street, uh, and 881 Monitor Street, block 19003. Lot 13 dot 01, formerly known as lots 13, 14, 15, and 16. Case number, uh, P20-112. And the final resolution number 20 is for extension of site plan approval. Address 55 Washburn Street, block 8202, lot 14. Applicant Purin and Angali Prasad. Case number P20-130.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for memorialization. Can we have a roll call, please, Erica?
Um, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Decore.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Miss, uh, Council President Waterman.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I don't think we need an executive session. Santa, do you need anything? Okay, um, so before we adjourn, I, I just want to, you know, thank everybody for 2020. This is it. Um, thank you for letting us all in your living rooms and kitchens and occasionally bathrooms and bedrooms and whatever.
Open closet.
It, it's, you know, e- everybody, this has been an interesting year. Um, it, it came up tonight. You know, I do want to recognize we lost Commissioner Seborowski this year. Uh, it's a big loss for the city. But, uh, you know, we do have two members that, oh my God, we haven't even seen in person yet. So, uh, you know, thank you, everybody, a- and especially staff. You know, you guys are going above and beyond, doing everything from home and, you know, really putting in some serious hours. Um, so again, thank you. Um, when we get somewhat back to normal, I owe you guys all a slice of pizza and/or a zeppole uh, on May.
We're going to go up on it. Mr. Chair, I'd also like to just thank you for the leadership that you've shown this year because, uh, you know, it's, it's been, I know it's been tough on you as well. It's been crazy with all these meetings. And then to just remind, remind the board that, you know, what we do is super important and it does, I mean, I've been in it for a while and it's just amazing the, the amount of work we do. I don't think anybody really knows what we do. Um, and, and the time commitment that it takes, but what we do, what we're, you know, our time is actually, uh, it, it, it pays off. And then obviously the staff for, you know, always being there, uh, and looking out after us. I really appreciate that. That's all I have to say. And then obviously the staff for, you know, always being there and looking out after us. I really appreciate that. That's all I have to say.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. I can't believe you can hear me over my dog snoring in the.
Snoring?
David, you might wanna think about your your cords behind you, your power adapter, what's written on there.
Yeah, the fire chief is looking at that. Look at your, yeah.
No, it's the language that's on there.
Oh.
Anyway. All right, so I would love to entertain a motion for adjournment at this point.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for twenty twenty.
And that's second it.
And thank you, guys. We're adjourned for twenty twenty. I appreciate you. Oh, and Eddie, by the way, I did want to say on that Eighteenth Street thing, I didn't want to one better you, but I've driven past, I've rode my bike past, and I've walked my dog.